Good morning, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 29th day of October 2020. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. Do you know who's Tommy John?
I haven't seen him.
Haven't seen him, okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yep.
Councilwoman Laufstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Ciboni.
All right, hopefully they'll be joining us. All right, so let's get started here. The first item on our agenda is wireless infrastructure. And we may be waiting for some people in this conversation. Janice, do you want to track down? I think probably Len should be here too if he's in.
I saw Janice outside just.
But Janice Schirr is going to be critical to this conversation.
Yeah, she was right outside the door.
She was right outside.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, does somebody want to pop out and grab her?
Janice?
And would the --
I marked the --
You marked the --
I haven't gotten started yet.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Ciboni is present. We're also, Cara Back is here. Janice Schirr is here. Len Chernobyl is here. All right, so let's get started. We're going to be talking about wireless infrastructure, service testing agreements. And Janice, do you want to introduce us? That's our -- Janice Schirr is our Land Planning and Development Administrator.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Thank you for having me back. It's already been a week since the last time I was here. It seems so fast. But last time I was here, we were talking about batteries and infrastructure. And here we are again, talking about more infrastructure basically, and by the way, cell towers. We asked GIS to just prepare this map so you had a sense of where they are throughout the town. Inadvertently, I forgot to add Cara Back to the agenda, but she is instrumental in this because through our -- we've kind of been down this road a little bit, you might recall. There were some conversations about testing agreements for a parcel that the town owns previously. We came to find through this process, we had a contract with a firm known as SBA who builds towers. They build towers, you know, and deal with carriers to go on there. So we --
This was a contract that went back a number of administrations?
Yes, so I will let -- yeah. Very long-term contract. So we -- so now going back to that, yeah. They are interested in, you know, partnering with the town, obviously through that old contract, to find towns that -- I mean towns -- sites that are suitable within the town if we do, if you do want to construct a tower on town property, stealth application, meaning everything inside of it, like a one unipole, monopole type of thing with the antennas embedded inside of it. And they've identified, again, that same 30-club lane parcel to talk to you about.
But what is this map? Is this all cell towers?
This map is actually where they exist now, yes, cellular.
These are actual towers? Are these lattice towers or pole towers?
There are different types. Some, the blue is public safety. The gray are just cell towers generally. And the brown are water, antennas affixed to water.
Towers.
Towers. And the green, it says cellular trachon, which I don't even know what that means.
Has anybody ever done like an RF?
Trachon is usually sort of the FAA.
Oh, so that must mean that it's higher than.
Is there ever been an RF study that shows where the weaknesses are?
Yes. So back a number of years ago, probably around, I want to say 2006, we did a wireless master plan. We engaged a firm to come and do some RF frequency studies to determine, you know, where the coverage gaps are. Cellular companies, basically.
That was over 10 years ago though, so that may be --
Absolutely, so maybe something we really need to look at.
Maybe changed a lot. I mean, I know driving around, and I have my particular carriers, AT&amp;T, but there are spots where I always lose the call, almost always lose the call. So I just know sort of anecdotally from my own experience that there are some real bad spots. And I can't imagine if I had to call 911 in those spots, that would be a potential real problem. But on North Sea Road, up in that area, Neuyak Road, up, yeah, and even Watermill Bridge, Hampton, can be very weak. There's a bunch of spots where it just drops off.
You can see the distance, you know, there's some.
Even here in the village, as you get towards the beach, there's some bad spots.
We had a lot of conversations about this the last time. We were talking about line-of-sight issues, and that was one of the things that was difficult to establish, those distances and so forth. So I mean, I recall that conversation we had. So is this a follow-up to that?
Well, it's a follow-up to trying to plan for the gaps in service and the need for -- it's like there's coverage and then there's capacity. So there's not only, you need a stream of coverage where you're driving and it goes from tower to tower, right? The next tower kind of picks it up. And if you don't have that, that's a coverage issue. And then when you do have coverage, it's my understanding, it's also a bandwidth capacity situation because of all the streaming and different things that you can do now on your device. They also need enough capacity to handle that kind of, you know, influx of users that have a lot of data that they --
Does that also have something to do with the implementation of 5G?
I think when we talk about 5G is really another, you know, we've gone through 3G, 4G, now 5G, and that's their antenna strengths, the ability.
But it's more localized.
It's more localized, but it still works to -- I think you need both.
There's still a tower back there.
Like 5G isn't going to replace towers. It's going to work together.
But you have to have the towers to make those systems work.
Yeah, it's sort of like getting smaller and closer in versus mega towers. And that's the policy.
Are these the apparatuses that will be going on utility poles possibly?
Potentially, the, like, small, they call that small cell.
Right, telephone poles, and there's more of them, and they would transition to a tower.
Right.
And then, okay.
But that's not what we're talking, yes.
Okay, that's what we're talking about today, so.
Right.
I just wanted to be sure that if there was a request to install towers, that that wasn't related or is related to 5G implementation in local neighborhood networks.
In other words, you don't want to do something today that will be obsolete in a couple of years?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear you. I think that what, in terms of a tower, you're still going to need that to speak to the smaller 5G antennas that may be placed in like a downtown Hamlet Center or along right of ways or something along those lines. But these are still the, the larger towers have to communicate with one another over.
All right, so this company, SBA, their reps are here, right? They looked at various town-owned properties to see if any of them were viable for cellular infrastructure. They came back with the same property that we had looked at next to the Neuyak Golf Club, right? Where the highway yard is.
That's right, that's the one.
And they were proposing one of those like flagpole type of structures, everything on the inside.
Yes, unipole or monopole.
Monopole, yeah. Yeah, you can't even tell they're cell towers. I see them in various locations.
Yeah, they're just a large, you know.
Just a white pole.
White pole.
Yeah.
Which you could, you know, and I will let them talk more about.
And then, and under that, if they build it, they front, they put all the money up for the construction under the contract, right? And then we split the revenue 50/50 or something like that.
I think that in that contract, the, and Cara could speak better to this, but there is a provision that says the town would be obligated to pay some amount, $125,000, no more than 125 toward the cost.
Toward the construction.
And that, but we don't have to pay it out of pocket, it's just paid in revenue share. So until we get to 125, then it would be the 50/50 revenue share.
Right.
That's what that contract says from so many years ago. So with that, you know, we're trying to figure out all the options and see if you have any appetite for building something on town property or, and if you do, then we would be engaging with SBA.
Right now, we have one tower that is on town land, the Hampton Bay's one at Jackson Avenue.
Police, yes, yep.
That was constructed by SBA.
That's right.
Under this old agreement.
Right.
Okay. And do we audit that? I guess we do occasionally, right, to see which carriers are up there and how much they're paying and make sure we're getting our 50%.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And if you'd like to know more about that contract, like I said, Cara can speak to that. And also, we have Keith Kito and Janine Brino is the attorney for SBA.
Right, so last time we talked about this club lane, I think it was with a different company, Elite Towers.
Yeah, so Elite came.
And that was before we realized that there was a right of refusal.
We had that whole contract, that's right.
Okay, with this other company from this old contract.
Very much so. That was signed by. That is from 1999 and extends out to 2047.
It's like Vince Canuzia was supervisor or something.
That's right.
And then it was extended by, I think, Linda Cabot or Scipini, they all, and maybe Anna, I don't know. But there's been a number of changes and modifications to it through the years, so.
It also has a self-renewing provision in there that you might want to take a look at.
Right.
Yeah.
So when the Jackson Avenue Tower Agreement was extended, right, it affected the underlying.
And then it affects that master lease that says you have to use them.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Repeating into time, yes. So, you know, right now, they're the vendor and they are wanting to build it. And so if you want it to be built, then we can see if this will make any sense in this location.
Right, okay.
That's basically.
And the last time we discussed, there was some community concern.
Yes.
But I don't know that we were talking about a monopole with internal, everything on the inside. I think it was, people thought it was going to be a conventional cell tower, so.
And Janine might have some recollection to that because right now, they want to, like, they want to be able to do entry and testing agreements to be able to go onsite and do those RF studies.
Can we put something into the space where the monopole would be, just so that people could see what it would look like?
They do, they would be required, SBA, to go through the whole planning process, which requires, they usually do what's called a balloon test, where they put like a crane with a balloon, and then they do renderings so you can see it from public view sheds or vantage points along roadways or from someone's house. You know, they predetermine what spots and the planning board says.
They just hold the white pole up with some sort of piece of equipment, not by hand, but like.
They put a balloon at a crane height of the proposed tower.
Have the crane hold a white pole.
And then they insert that into like a rendering.
No, I understand that, they have to look at the picture, whereas if you had a crane.
Well, you see the balloon in the crane in real time.
If you had a piece of heavy equipment holding a white pole that's roughly the same diameter in that spot, you'd get a, you'd be able to see exactly what it's going to look like.
Yeah, except for, you know, the white pole part, you know, I don't know if they're going to just hover that there.
Just a.
But anyway, but that's, you know, they have their way of being.
Crane can do that.
The crane, the crane itself, you know, kind of, you can see it. So if you have questions for me, but let's, let's have.
Bring them up.
Okay, great.
Who do we have?
Janine Brino is the attorney from.
Oh, from Ray Nielsen and Talon.
Sorry, yes.
But you're representing SBA.
Janice, I would have questions for you afterwards, so thank you.
Sure.
And who are you with?
I'm Keith Kito, I'm with SBA as well.
Keith, can you tell me about this company, SBA?
So SBA, take this off.
Take the mic.
So SBA Communications is a publicly traded company. They probably, I think they own over 100,000 sites across the US. When they actually signed this agreement with you, this is when telecom was really coming into play, right? They've now exploded, right? So they're not really in the development game anymore. But I have a very good relationship with them, so I reached out to them because I heard about this agreement and said, hey, would you guys be interested in bringing back development? Because they really haven't developed how they used to in the early 2000s, right? So they said, of course, you know, just because of everything that's happening, the capacity. And I will say, Janice did a great job for not being in the industry, explaining the macro, the micro, the capacity issues. So SBA is a full-service telecommunications firm. And off of that, I will say, so on all of Long Island, because I also develop on Long Island, it's the South Fork that truly only has the dead spots. Everywhere else on Long Island, we're dealing with capacity issues, where your phone will say, oh yeah, I got five bars, but you can't send a text, you can't make a call. Out here, you guys truly have true dead zones. So off of that, we already know where the carriers want to go. So I did work with Janice and I was saying, hey, here are sites that we know where the carriers want to go already, and this is where your property is. Would you guys be interested in this, pretty much?
And these are not exclusive to one carrier or another? You let them all on?
Correct, and I.
Does that mean you have to go taller to make room for more carriers?
So we prefer to build 120-foot flagpole monopole towers, and that will include six canisters, and the canisters are 10 feet each. In this, carriers might be doubling up canisters, so they'll take 20 feet of air rights, pretty much.
You say canisters, so you're actually talking about external structures?
No, inside.
Intern, oh, internal?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So how wide is that pole?
At the top, at the top of it, it's 38 inches, at the bottom, it's 48. So it tapers out.
Okay.
Yes. And I believe Janice mentioned it, or maybe Cara, hi Cara, Vince, hello, that the town, we always let like the police department, fire department on for free, and I believe you guys mentioned, you guys already do that separately? Because what we usually do is just, they'll jump on, but they, those are the only antennas if the police department jumps on, the fire department jumps on. Those would be whip antennas, so they're very thin.
Yeah.
You know, like an inch diameter, and they would be at the top. That would be the only exposed antenna.
Right.
If they were to jump on.
Okay, yeah, I've seen those whips there. You almost can't see them.
I think they're even above here, so.
Okay.
And those are capable to interface with departments on the North Fork and East Hampton?
Correct.
And Suffolk County?
Mm-hmm, yes. So they would all work together if.
And it would work together with our current system that we have?
Yes. I don't know who you guys use, it could be, is it IWT?
I'm not sure.
Yes.
It is? Yeah, so they would come in, police department, Suffolk County, and they would build out that system and say, hey, we need this type of receiver, this type of antenna up there to make it all work.
So you said that carriers know where they need to be, so I'm assuming they go out and they're doing surveys or they're getting phone calls from customers saying, my calls are dropping, so that's why they already know where they want to go?
Yes, they're getting phone calls. We have executives of Verizon like calling me saying, can we get this going? This is bad now, you know, out here.
Okay. So they're signing, or potentially will sign agreements that if you build it, they will use it?
Exactly. So what we have to do is first get the site lease here, and then we go to the carriers and say, hey, here's our right to build it, sign an anchor tenant lease with them, and then sub-tenant leases for whoever else jumps on, and then we go through the permitting process.
And this one particular tower, this would improve the cell service in what radius?
You could do, it could be potentially up to a two-mile radius. But I will tell you, carriers are having us build these between .75 and a mile each now, especially on Long Island. Just with the new technology and the demand for this stuff is just, we're way behind schedule, to be completely honest on this network.
I'm seeing a lot of open space on our map here. Is this the only location that was considered, the one in?
No, I said, I believe I sent Janice seven, and we kind of worked together, and I think we want to start with one to see how it goes, get the community feedback, and then, you know, really fix the problem out here. Because the demand, the demand for the carriers is here, usually that's a little bit of an issue. Like saying, hey, because carriers realistically spend around $750,000 to a million per site, so it's a lot to get them to go to a new site, right? It's not going to be an issue out here because they know it's an issue. And since the coronavirus happened with everyone moving out, the demand is just through the roof.
What'd you say about a million dollars to carry?
Exactly. So that's what their costs are to even just come out here with what they have to do as well.
To construct a tower?
Well, no, to actually get onto the tower. They have a large cost. If it's bringing fiber, if it's their infrastructure, even the antennas.
And that's not part of the construction cost?
Oh, that's, that's not on us, no.
That's just hooking up to the pole.
Exactly.
That's individual carrier.
Yeah, and people are always shocked when I say that, like, it's not just like, oh yeah, I build the tower, then they can just connect the antennas.
What is the cost to put up a 120-foot monopole?
Uh, well, there's a lot of variables. Say if everything goes smoothly, we could be looking at maybe 500,000 as around now, around now, so even when this agreement.
And we're only responsible for the first 125,000?
Yeah, so you guys, back then, it was a good deal for SBA. Now it's like, ah, construction cost.
Well, we provide the land, the cost of land has gone up too, so.
Oh, yes.
So you, it's a good deal for you guys because you don't have to provide the land.
The 1 million installation, that's the installation of the canisters that you?
Yeah, it's just everything that.
And then there are, there's fiber optics that go down? Is that a ground installation?
Yes.
Will they be working on the road, or are they going to hook to poles?
That would be, if there's, if they could have poles or if there's already fiber in the area, what they'll do is at least probably, if it's, say, it's like Optimum or something, they'll take that, that fiber. But that would actually be in the construction drawings. If there's no poles in the area, we usually go underground.
But that's, that Optimum Altice is doing a fiber, you know, fiber distribution townwide. And I know Verizon is involved in that to possibly expand those fiber bundles in order to take that traffic, correct? So where those endpoints are, are critical to what those costs are, you have to get that to the.
Correct, because it's expensive to run fiber, and that's why even like Elon Musk is doing Starlink, just because the cost to run fiber, later on, they've worked out the numbers, they're sending satellites up instead, so.
Yeah, cheaper, yeah. So your company, you said you sort of got away from the construction of infrastructure. What is the main function, your main role in your company?
So I'm just a representative for SBA, so we signed an agreement with them to work on this.
What company are you with?
I'm with, it would be technically Kito Equity or LI Tower Partners is the company that I do business under.
Okay.
And we signed it with, we signed an agreement with SBA.
But SBA, what is, what do they do primarily? They're a big company, right?
Buy towers, manage towers, and develop, they still, there's.
Or they purchase the towers.
Purchase the towers. And they do that is because zoning of towers could take years, right? So they filtered that out after, I think it was like the '07, '08 crisis, they kind of just said everything was shot then, right? So they realized it was more profitable just to buy towers and to work with local guys on the ground, boots-on-the-ground people like me.
Okay. Now, I've been through a number of cell tower battles, you know, I think I have some scars left over from that.
I think we're all a little wounded.
The, no, you know, I've been at this for a number of years, so I do think now more than ever, there is an outcry for increased cell service, you know, which may outweigh the aesthetic concerns that some have. They always, they always raise the health concerns, which I haven't really, I think that's better understood today than maybe it was 20 years ago, the electromagnetic concerns, frequency concerns. But so many people are now, particularly in this pandemic, using streaming cell data to, you know, for Zoom meetings or whatever it is, that there's, I'm getting more, my office gets more and more calls complaining about cell service. So maybe today, you know, it has shifted a little bit more, people have gotten used to, I guess, some of the cell towers that are out there. But I'm a little concerned since you say you really haven't been in the development side, your company or SBA hasn't been in the, that are you prepared to work with the community to address the community concerns, to give them everything they need to get the comfort level up, that this is something that benefits them? If you live in that area, it's good for you to be able to call 911 reliably, that's positive. People don't have landlines anymore like the old days, they're cell-dependent, you know, just try losing your cellphone and see how, you know, how you feel, you know, where, they become like extensions of our body. So I think that maybe today, but I do need a community that will sort of do some hand holding, I mean, a company rather, with the community, do some handholding to say, look, you have questions about it, what information do you need? What can I provide to you to get you to feel better about this proposal? Because ultimately, you know, we're the ones in the policy making posts and, you know, we're answerable to the public. And, yeah, we know people want cell towers, but we also know that the people in and around it are going to be concerned about it hurting their property values, or maybe the health concerns, or changing the quality of their life, particularly if there's any blinking lights that are going to go on it.
So that's only over 200 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to answer two questions.
Go ahead.
So I mentioned that SBA kind of got out of it, the development, but I'm actually a developer, so I have two going up, and one's actually drilling next week. We have one in Kutchog, the Kutchog Fire Department, and the Terryville Fire Department. And just for background, the Terryville Fire Department, there's actually antennas within half a mile of this site, and the carriers are jumping on just because of the demand issue. And another thing you brought up was community. So I even told Cara and Janice, I was like, look, I don't want to force a development, you know, I know there's agreement, but if the community doesn't want it, we're not going to do it, you know? We want everyone on board, we want to fix the issues if the community is on board, so.
Usually I find when the community is not on board is because of a perception of what's going to happen that doesn't actually match the reality, that they imagine this giant lattice tower going up. And I think that we could address that by, I was suggesting before, that a piece of heavy equipment hold a pole into the space at the height, so people knew, would know exactly what it's going to look like, you know, if that's possible. I've heard of the balloon tests, which is, and then the renderings. But I think it's, you know, if you could actually see what it's going to look like first, it might help.
No, sure. Janine Brino, again, so our firm has been representing carriers since the first application before people even knew what it was. It was in Hempstead in the 1980s. We're very familiar with the East End Town, Southampton Planning Board. So what we normally do before we proceed with a project is we'll meet with the local CAC, we'll do kind of like a mini presentation to the CAC, if they want it, of the presentation that we would go to the planning board with for the site plan special exception permit. That would include expert witnesses that would address planning concerns, visual impact, and I get into detail about that. We also do an appraisal report, we also do the RF studies, it'd actually be a visual propagation mapping, all right, here's Neuyak, I know you said there's anecdotally coverage gaps along Neuyak Road, North Sea, so Neuyak Road, so it'll show on the map, it'll be white is the coverage gap. Blue and green typically the colors they use will show, this is what the proposed site's going to do, this is where you're going to now have coverage if we actually erect this site. So that's an RF perspective. We'll have drawings, you know, just normal construction drawings so people can see, it would be a stealth pole. We can show to the CAC, look, this is the stealth pole we're using where everything is concealed, again, Keith had mentioned, for any emergency services, they're just typical whips which usually blend with the skyline. We can show them, this is what we're doing, the stealth pole, this is an example of the traditional pole, which everyone sees at the New York State DOT yard when you're driving into the Hamptons, that's an example of that, it's not going to be this, it's not going to be the tree pole on the hut that everyone knows up there, I've heard of toilet flush in comparison to that. It's not going to be the old broadcast towers, which is actually, that's where they're getting service along Millstone, I think 42 and 45 are those sites over here in your master wireless plan. So we can show pictures that these are structures you've seen throughout the town. This is what it would look like.
That would be, that would be great if I could stop you here. You mentioned an appraisal report?
Yeah.
Now, this appraisal report, is this, would this cover various properties on Wildwood Road and Noyak Road? Or what, what exactly does an appraisal report cover?
Report is, um, is we have, um, a couple of, um, real estate appraisers that are extremely familiar with wireless sites on Long Island. And what they'll do is they'll take studies of sites that have been existing for say twenty years. I know one of the studies he's done is on the, um, Bridge Hampton at the Liper, oh, local, old Liper National Grid property, seventeen seventy four Montal Highway. They'll study an existing site and see how the data and the sales trends have, um, um, fared over the years. So it's not actually of the homes, it's of existing wireless sites. And to show that there's no negative impact on real estate values due to the construction and existence of a wireless.
I'm sorry, would you say that again? It's not on the homes, it's on the site, right?
It's, it's, so the studies that, that will be in the report of our existing sites and to show that, that there's no negative effect on the real estate property values in the neighborhood surrounding the site. So he won't say, it won't be including like, well, Mr. and Mrs. Smith live at one Main Street. And this is a specific appraisal report of their home. It's the property with this type and then the surrounding neighborhood showing that the data trend, that there was no negative, you know, downward turn.
Okay, and you would be using something other than Bridge Hampton, New York for your, your studies? There are other factors at play over there that have contributed to the assessments and.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be various sites across Long Island, similar neighborhoods. We try to, you know, gauge like a similar neighborhood. Obviously, the Hamptons is different than other parts of Long Island, but we always try to get as close as possible. We actually had approved by the planning board a couple of years back, it, sixty one Foster, but that's kind of an industrial area in Bridge Hampton. It's the type of pole, it's the unipole, but the houses are a little bit farther removed because that's right along the railroad tracks. But again, we will provide studies in the appraisal report of existing towers.
I read some study that said that at least with young people like millennials, that internet cell connectivity was more important to them than the quality of the school district.
Really?
So, yeah, I mean, so it, it may actually increase property values that people want broadband. They want, you know.
Would you be hiring this appraisal company? They work for you?
Yes, and it, it would be, it, it, even though it's hired by the applicant, you know, SBA is, is a tower developer, they, they do do, um, the studies are if, if they couldn't advocate, then they basically say no. Like if, if they can't, you know, advocate that it won't, I shouldn't say advocate, to conclude that it won't negatively affect property values, they'll just turn down the project. I've had that happen before. And then we actually don't usually proceed with the project once we get that conclusion from.
Is it possible that it could negatively affect some property values and positively affect others depending on proximity?
I, I've, I've, um, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, we usually look at like a mile view shed. I haven't really seen that specific statement in, in your reports, and I've been doing this a while, that that's been a conclusion where it's like, well, obviously a house that lives right next to a site, you know, is different than a house that is a mile away from the site and benefits from the coverage afforded by that site. But I've never seen that delineated in a report like that. It's kind of just again, an overall look at an existing site and the surrounding neighborhood and just showing that the data trends, that there hasn't been a decline due to the existence of that site. One of the other aspects, I know you mentioned the EMF reports, just as a, a, a note, the federal government doesn't allow town boards or planning boards or zoning boards to regulate based upon emissions so long as they meet the criteria. We put that on the record in general at any planning board application meeting. People have concerns. So what we do is we do an EMF study just showing, you know, we comply with all, and actually usually it's a worst case scenario we do. So we're actually way lower of the FCC emission standards. The taller the site, the less emissions actually that affect you at grade. Usually around six feet tall, they usually will compare to. Hundred twenty foot pole usually is like around like less than one percent of the standard, and that's a worst case scenario. I've never seen it very higher, much higher than that. Usually the rooftops that are lower to the ground, those usually have maybe four, five percent of the standard. But again, a tall structure like this, it would be, you know, probably less than one percent of the standard. But again, we would prepare a report, have an expert, if there's any questions in, you know, preliminary CAC meeting, at the actual planning board work sessions and public hearing, we would do that. And going back to your questions about the visual study. So yes, Janice is right, they can usually do a balloon test where they'll float an actual like usually five foot wide balloon or a crane test. We usually on the East End prefer to do a crane test because of the winds out here. We just want to make sure it's steady because sometime the balloon can be a little bit funky with the wind speed. So we usually will raise a crane in the spot, so it would be raised at a hundred and twenty feet. And then a drive team from them, the planning firm will drive around, take photographs of the site. So we would do a one mile view shed saying, all right, here are all the roads where we can see it within one mile. And then separately, some of the viewpoints we would take and will invite the public to participate in any of the boards. We usually put on notice the town board, the zoning board, the planning board. Look, this is the date we're doing it. Here are two rain dates for the test. We'll put a notice in the Southampton press and we'll put a sign of the property. I know this property, no one really goes by it except for the houses on, um, you know, Cable Path and Club Lane, Kelly Path over there. So not many people will see the sign, but again, it would be in the newspaper. So at the time, we'll raise a crane, drive, photograph it. And then they'll do modeling in the computer, where they'll render actually what a site would look like there. So they'll take the crane, erase the crane, and then they'll place a drop in the pole. But again, it's all three D modeling, all specs are placed into the program. So you would actually see the visual renderings of what it would look like from those different viewpoints.
So I, I've got two questions for you, just to satisfy my, my own education here. You said the federal government does, um, there's, there's a maximum of RF emissions that are established as a standard. Is there any such standard for homes that?
It, it takes into account, um, places where it's, um, where accessible by workers, like on a rooftop, have different standards than just.
But within a home, the RF environment is not regulated.
No, it would be, it would be outside, so then it would be actually even less inside. And but it'll go through the standards in the report that we have our expert.
Okay. And so the follow up to that is that we've recently had our meters, our electrical meters turned wireless across the town of Southampton. Is that taking up any of this, of, of this, as a carrier, are they part of this distribution oversell, oversell?
Um, I would defer to Keith, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
It would be like PSCG?
Yeah, they've replaced.
They would have the agreement with, they could have it with Sprint, they could have it with Sprint being T-Mobile. That's really up to, I don't know.
We wouldn't know that.
No, but I'm sure I could probably find out, probably public information if they have a wireless agreement. That's just modern.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how much of the bandwidth that constitutes.
We can find out.
Yeah, Keith, so when you speak, you're going to have to come up on the phone. Oh, yeah. We can hear you, but we're filming.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And the producer can't hear you.
I didn't know if you were talking to me. Sorry, re-say that right now? Redo that spiel?
Yeah, go ahead, do it.
So it could, yeah, so it could be, it could be a carrier that PSCG has a contract with. It could also be even like Altice if they have Wi-Fi hotspots. Uh, if I could guess, it'd probably be a major carrier. Uh, I know Sprint and T-Mobile did go after this stuff. Like I know Sprint has wireless smoke detectors and et cetera, so.
Yeah, because it changes their costs significantly. And then we bear, if, if, if this is part of the network that, you know, the cell tower that we're talking about, or how, I'm not sure how that technology is working. There's a, you know, there, it changes the model, but it also changes our relationship as far as what, how the town or municipality could be, could benefit from that, that, and decrease in overhead.
Um, yes, yes, because everything's remotely monitored now, so they don't have to send someone out to look at this stuff. Even the, all the towers are remotely monitored, so they know immediately if something's, something's wrong, you know? There's not people going there, even though all the agreements say twenty four seven access. They, they don't bother unless they know something's wrong. And that, these are very low maintenance.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for the counselor there. Thank you. First question, what, what exactly are emissions? You, you mentioned emissions, what, what is that?
So it's, it's electromagnetic, electromagnetic radiation frequencies. It's, it's, you can't see it, but it's the, actually the technology, yeah. It's, it's different actually on what's coming out of your phone is actually stronger of the handheld. And then, um, again, I'm not an RF expert, this is just what I've heard for the past, you know, twenty years. Then actually what's emitting from the actual tower. But the frequency technology has been around since World War Two. So it is very familiar, it's tried and true, frequency technology. People, you know, I know a lot of the concerns are, well, cell phones haven't been around for, you know, more than twenty plus years, thirty years. How do we know? Frequency actually upon which it works has been around since World War Two.
And would you expand a little bit on what you said earlier that towns cannot consider emissions?
Sure.
If this is in the permitting process of the locations and siting of these poles? Explain that a little bit more.
Sure, it's on federal regulations, basically you cannot deny a site based upon health, uh, health concerns so long as the site meets the FCC emission standard.
And in these guidelines, are there any restrictions on the location of these poles? Do they?
So, so there's, there's federal guidelines, um, but that's, it really depurs to the local jurisdiction. And your town, as Janice had mentioned, in oh eight, you had a master wireless plan. Comcom, I think was your consultant, came in and did this whole overhaul with the planning department, town attorney's office of your wireless plan, which is still in effect. I know it's, you know, twelve years old now and things have changed and demand is crazy out here with telemedicine, virtual learning, work from home with, due to COVID. So, uh, but you do have a wireless plan in, that's currently enacted in your town. And we would go through all the criteria in our site plan special exception application to the planning board. And it does address aesthetics, um, you know, setbacks, uh, uh, screening the ground based equipment. It, it hits on every aspect of a site.
And are there any restrictions or limitations on the state level? Is there any state law that?
Uh, no.
It's all federal requirements?
There, there are federal regulations that have to do, which you probably have, well, planning board probably is actually more familiar with it at this point, with, um, with timing, with, because the wireless need is so great nationally that the FCC has adopted orders that has to do with timing. So a site like this, which we call in the industry a new site build, as opposed to a co-location where you'd say install antennas on a roof, a new site build from literally the day you file it to the day you have like your permanent hand to go to construction, it has to be processed within a hundred and fifty days. A site that's on a roof has to be processed, if there's no other antennas there, within ninety days. So a lot of the federal regulations have to do with timing, no prohibition of sites, but nothing really at a state level, other than, you know, town law, just your usual town law. But your wireless code and federal regulations kind of cover the area as opposed to just your New York State town law. I mean, obviously if we're seeking an area variance from the zoning board of appeals, you know, the normal criteria would apply there. But your wireless code actually covers the setbacks and everything like that pretty well, so. But yeah, so.
Oh, good, I'm glad. Because this is going to be, this is going to need to be fully vetted because I know this area, I know the members in this area. Well, I, there's significant concern about a, a cellphone tower in this area. It's also, um, it's, it's also, uh, oh gosh, I lost my train of thought here. But, uh, you know, I can tell you that the community is going to want to be fully involved in this and you, you know, you have to be able to answer these questions. What I was thinking before, there is a, there is a major issue in this area and other areas, but in this area where the cell service just completely drops out and it's, it's been getting worse over the years. So there's certainly a balance there. I'm glad that you're willing to go to the community with this because they are going to want to hear from you and these questions will be asked and others.
Absolutely. I mean, we take the approach, it's always a collaborative effort. It's going to be in their community. So our office and, and the vendors we work with have always been, let's work the planning department, let's work with the community. Because like Keith said, if the people don't want it, it's a lot of money for the carriers and developers to build a site. They don't want to waste at your, the municipality and the people's time and, you know, their money, you know, it's just not worth it. So we always try to take that collaborative approach to it. So we are absolutely, um, I don't know if I can get from Janice if there's a CAC leader, if, put us in touch with, or just if the town board wants to run point on, you know, saying, publishing like, here's the next work session on this. And it's, we'll do whatever, however you want to go about it, but absolutely encourage the community participation even before we file the site plan special exception application. Because you don't want to be into the process and have drawings and renderings for this, but then the community say, you know what? We don't like the unipole, we actually want a flag pole, which is basically the same thing with a flag on top. Or we, we like the tree pole in this area. So yeah, so we would like to have all that. We like to do our due diligence and have everything done upfront with the community and planning staff and the town board in this case, because it's, um, you know, town property. And then this way when we get to the planning board, you know, it's nicer to have smooth sailing. I'm sure there'll be a lot of issues, um, you know, in general, but, um, it's always nice to have all your ducks in a row.
One last question, is this a revenue producer for the town in any way?
Yes, it is. And I think Len Marchesi, um, has sat in on meetings with Janice and Kara and Keith. Yes.
Can I ask on the?
When it's on the town property.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, as the guy who has to submit the budgets and.
Sure.
All of us try to keep taxes down. So any revenues that are non-property tax revenues, we appreciate. How long, eh, eh, how long before this becomes cash positive to the town? In other words, like what's the estimated revenue here? I know there's going to be sub leases and things like that. I know where we have to cover the first a hundred and twenty five thousand, whatever it is. But after that, there's money to the town. So is that second year, is that first year, is that?
I'm going to defer to Keith as the money guy.
And, and what's the likely expectation of revenue?
Okay, so carriers usually pay around three thousand and thirty two hundred a month per canister. And as I mentioned earlier, there's six canisters. So off the bat.
So eighteen thousand a month?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred a month?
Correct. That, that would be just with one canister.
As I said, three thousand a canister per month.
Eighteen hundred, so, uh, sixteen hundred.
Oh, sixteen hundred.
Because it's a fifty fifty split, so with.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Our, our end would be.
Exactly. So you guys, that, right off the bat.
Sixteen hundred per ca, per carrier?
Mm-hmm.
Per month?
Yes. Well, it's thirty two, but you guys are net fifty percent. You guys get fifty percent of gross, not net.
So that's like twenty thousand a year per, and how many of those would there be?
Well, out here with the demand, we're, we even think Verizon could take two, AT&amp;T could take two, and then T-Mobile. So we could have a fully loaded up tower.
So it could be like a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Exactly.
Roughly to the town, so. And the first year we see nothing, second year we're cash positive?
So.
And our money comes off the top, right? We're not paying for utility.
Correct. You guys are gross revenue share? If it was net revenue share, I wish it was because it's better for the developer.
Sure.
No, but you guys get the exact top, you get gross.
Right, so we don't have to deal with the cost of maintenance, we don't have to deal with anything.
Correct.
Administration, no billing, whatever it is, we get fifty percent of gross.
And, uh, so you know, it takes, say, we have this standing within a year. The other carriers will jump on within a year to two years, you know? It's always, once you have a tower standing, the carriers can move very quickly. You know, it's, it's always difficult to have them as an anchor tenant because then they're in the whole process. They set aside all this money and you could be in zoning for two years, three years, you know, when they could be using that money elsewhere. So once the tower's standing, the carriers jump on, especially in a true.
How long of a term is this?
Um, they, they sign fifty year leases.
Fifty year lease?
Yes. They do have, they do have termination.
Fifty years from now?
Well, they have termination rights. So they actually have a termination right that says they can cancel at any time. And that's just industry standard because technology could change.
Okay. And then who's responsible for decommissioning at the end if it's obsolete?
We would actually be, that's in the agreement, but.
Okay. I'm getting in the weeds a little bit here, but.
No, no, it would be worn, um, I think the master lease, and Kara can correct me if I'm wrong, calls for it to be worn by SBA as the lessee. Just on that point, um, you know, Keith had mentioned, you know, the zoning process can take quite some time. So I know, and I, I don't know how often Southampton talks to East Hampton, but, you know, with the demand for service out here right now with, in light of the pandemic, I know the town board actually is taking an initiative there on a town site on Stevens Hands Path. Verizon is proposing a permanent installation over there right now. But because demand is so great right now that the town board, so the permanent installation, similar to this jurisdiction, is going for site plan special exception with the planning board. But the town board as owner of the property, they're allowing Verizon to go with a temporary installation. So it's almost like, you know, you go to a, um, a baseball game and they roll out, or a Super Bowl, they roll out these temporary installations, like a tower, a tower on wheels or a cell on wheels, they call it, just so they have service right now. On that one, because it won't be up just for a day, they'll do more of like a, it won't be on just like a cart with wheels. It would be more of like a ballast mount. But again, it's temporary, just because the demand is so great with, again, telemedicine, virtual learning, you know, work from home. So that's something for, I know you said that obviously the community is concerned with aesthetics and their neighborhood health, et cetera. But because this is a known dead spot for years and years and years.
Is that at the highway yard there?
It's on Stevens Hands Path, um, it's, um, no, it's near the ball fields.
Yeah, they're very close together.
Yeah, like one fourteen, one fifteen over there, yeah.
It's on Stevens Hands, it's.
Yeah, one oh six, um, one oh six Stevens Hands Path is the address. But I guess at the ball fields, it's known where they've had little leaguers get injured and, you know, they can't get, you know, I'm sure they have, you know, just some training, you know, the coaches, I know my husband's a coach. But, you know, to, you know, when your child's injured, you want to be able to get a call out. So they are actually taking the initiative to do those temporary installations. So that might be something that the town wants to consider here. And the way that they're doing it is under, I know you had enacted the declaration in March. So it would be, you know, just kind of, uh, under the emergency powers and to protect the public health, safety, the infrastructure. For this, there's no provision in the town's wireless code for temporary installations. So I don't think it would be needed on any, excuse me, necessary to suspend.
So it may take whatever, a year to get all the permits to do the permanent tower, you could do a temporary tower while you're waiting for the permanent.
And we would say, you know, if, if the town board was so inclined to say, well, this is emergency powers under, you know, the pandemic. There's no provision for temp towers in the wireless code. Um, there's no provision for temp towers in the wireless code, um, so I don't think there would be any need to suspend, um, um, the wireless code in such a deck, uh, you know, executive order. Um, so just something to consider, cause again, you know, like you said, everyone needs service right now, um, so that's just something to.
What are the dimensions of a temporary tower and what's the coverage of it?
So it would be, it would be similar, um, to the permanent tower, um, so on temporary towers though, it would probably, the, the thing about temporary is it wouldn't be, um, dimensions would be similar in height, they would get the height, but typically the antennas are exterior mounted. I haven't really seen any temp towers where it's a unipole, um, where they're concealed inside.
Is it same, same installation as a, a permanent tower?
No, they, they wouldn't, um, drill down, there's, there's no foundation, it would just be ballast mounted, yes, yes.
Guide wires.
Right, right. No, no, no guide wires, no guide wires, it would be ballast mounted, um.
Oh, it's on cannoli, you're kind of, oh, very cool.
Yes, yes, and we would, we, you know, again, if the town boards, um, you know, interested in something like that, we would submit specs for that, um, you know, we can enter into, that's a little bit different, I don't know, we can, you know, work on the language with the site agreement or enter into some sort of a license agreement. Um, but, you know, we can work that out if, if the board's interested. Um, and of course submit, um, photos of examples of what that would look like, um, structural documents, um, as to that. And it would, of course, um, especially going into winter, um, it would, uh, meet with all New York State building code requirements, especially I know the wind is a concern on the east end here, especially, you know.
So you can get something like that up pretty quickly?
Yes. Yeah, you can roll that out fast.
It wouldn't commit us to the long term?
Well, the planning board would have the, yeah, the planning board would have the ultimate, um, you know, if we enter into a site agreement, it's a site agreement, but then, you know, you're, you're wearing hats as landlord, as the town board, and then we do have to seek the approval from the planning board for the actual relief for the permanent, um, so.
But a knee under executive order would be.
Well, it might give people a taste of what it's gonna be like.
To actually get the services, say, wow, this is great.
Yeah, they might say, don't take it away now, they can make it permanent, yeah.
So especially, I mean, who knows what winter's gonna bring, I, I don't know what the, um, school district is out here. I know I'm, I'm in Western Suffolk and we're five days from my son, he's in second grade, but, you know, if they go all virtual, if they're kinda semi or, or old person now, you know, that might, you know, increase capacity yet again, um, for an area actually that doesn't even have great coverage, so.
Janice, you had wanted to say something, right? So before, let me, let me switch, yeah, Janine.
Just to that point, actually, Janine just made that, um, you are the landlord. So as the controller of the parcel, you have actually more ability to say, well, we don't want 120 feet, we want 100 feet, or whatever you want. Obviously that affects the revenue, but that would be your lease agreement. So you have more power in that sense than the planning board does when it comes to the reviews. So just, I just wanted to remind you that that ability to negotiate is yours because it's your, the town's property that you're talking about. So, um, whether or not that would be something that then, you know, the carriers want, or, you know, you're getting into that kinda thing. But they're proposing at the moment 120 feet. If you didn't want that, I wouldn't wait for the planning board, I would negotiate that in your lease agreement.
I'd wanna see what it looked like.
Right, so that would be just be.
I don't know what the difference between 100 and 120 is, I, they're both above the tree line, right?
Yes, so just so you're, uh, you know, fully aware of what you can and cannot do.
The agreement that we have, could you, uh, speak to that or, or would you?
I can give you a little bit of my.
Okay, uh, my, my question kinda refers to a bidding process, uh, it doesn't sound like there's, there would be one here, but please educate me on this.
Currently, the town has a master lease agreement with SBA, and that gives SBA the right of first refusal to lease any town-owned site where the town wants to build a cell tower. Um, that was, uh, signed back in 2001. Under the terms of that master lease agreement, SBA has to construct, operate, and maintain the tower and pay for the electrical service to the tower. As was mentioned, the town and SBA share in the cost of construction. Um, the overall construction costs for the town won't exceed that 125,000 dollars that was mentioned. And the, uh, monthly rental income would be reduced, uh, by whatever the, the cost was on the town side. So in other words, the town doesn't have to lay any out-of-pocket expenses to, for this construction. Um, and then what was mentioned is that the rent is split 50-50, um, the rent that's, that's obtained through these, um, you know, through these characters.
So the cost would be, uh, of the construction would be deducted from that interest rate for, until we, until it's paid off and then we get the full?
Correct, yep.
A master lease.
And it's guaranteed, the town's guaranteeing a minimum of 2,000 a month, so we, we would still continue to get revenue while that, the cost of construction is being deducted, so.
So a, a master lease agreement essentially gives these folks, nice presentation by the way, uh, right of first refusal. So if we got another company in to, to do this at a different price, at a different, whatever the standards and, and terms were, they, they would, uh, have the legal right to match it.
That's correct, yep.
Is that something we're considering doing? I guess that's us.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we put out an RFP or, or, you know, we would have to include that in the RFP that, you know, we are in a, currently in a contract, that SBA has the right of first refusal.
Yeah, I'm curious, in 2001, do you know, and you may or may not know this, um, why we would sign such an agreement? Did we get, did they build something for us?
I, I wasn't here.
Jackson Avenue.
That, that's, that's for history, I suppose.
Well, there was a, there was one tower built at, by the police station.
That's right.
Yeah. Uh, that was probably around that time, I'm guessing.
Right, yeah.
It's been up for a long time.
Yeah.
And how long is this agreement, I believe you said it earlier, but.
So the master lease agreement runs with any site lease agreement. And currently, the site lease agreement that they have for the Jackson Avenue property runs through 2046, I believe.
Well, I mean, with the town, the master lease agreement with the town of Southampton, to construct any cellphone or other towers on our properties is to, 2049?
Yeah, I think it's 2046.
Ish, okay. Okay.
Which begs the question, like, how did one board?
Yeah, exactly, it's just whatever.
Find a future board and many other boards for such a long period?
Yeah.
But it, the terms are not unfavorable, are they?
It doesn't sound like it, I mean, my understanding of, uh, you know, any kind of terms that the town would get now if they were entering into contract would be quite different. You know, my understanding is the split is a 70-30 split on the rent, not a 50-50, so, and I, I.
Town being the 30.
The town being the 30, yep, and that the, um, the cost of construction wouldn't be limited to the town split of 125,000 dollars.
This is a, uh, we control the market, these are our constituents and customers, this is our property. So if we were to go out and, and, and ask another company if they could match this particular proposal, then what they could do is match that proposal if it's better for us. Right, am I saying this right?
SBA has the right to match any proposal.
We put out an RFP, someone else gives us a great deal on a tower, we're, we're making more money, it's gonna cost less, it's gonna have less emissions. I don't know, what, whatever these things are, uh, they would, they can, they can match that price.
SBA can, yes.
Right, and they would have to come in at a better deal for the town.
They would just, they would just have to match.
Match it.
What we received, you know, the offer we received.
Which begs the question 50 years from now, that may not be such a good thing for, you know, to your point, Jay. The unforeseen here is kinda, you know, you're gonna leave a legacy for future boards that we have absolutely no control over. Although, I guess that's life pretty much generally in government, but, you know, that's something to think about. I, you know, my suspicion is the technology's changing so rapidly, 50 years is, is a generation, now that's a huge change, but.
What did Elite Tower propose for this site?
Do you know, Janice? I'm, I'm not familiar with that, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Was it a better deal than this, or, we don't know?
I don't know, I don't, I wasn't part of that.
Well, we don't know, we would have to put out an RFP and, and see if there are other companies that are interested in doing this. We also have the, um, we, we would have to go out to the community on this and to, you know, because it's there and they're there, so.
There was a prior.
There was a prior.
Right. Janine, my, Janine, you were, you weren't involved, if you don't recall, sorry.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. No problem, that's okay.
So Kara, one last question, if, if we agree to use SBA in 2020, does that then extend our contract to 2065?
Well, that would be part of the negotiations because they would want a new site lease agreement, um, for this particular site. And this, the master lease runs with any, the longest site, um, lease. So, you know, we would have to negotiate that.
Yeah, the matching, it's probably, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda strange.
It is strange, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe that could be part of the negotiation over this towers.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. And so just Janice, uh, what's next? What do we, what do we do here? I, I'm sort of interested in seeing the community reaction to it, you know, maybe doing this visual test.
So there's some chicken and egg things happening here because they sort of don't wanna commit to doing a lot of, of the work without the, um, site lease, right?
Yes.
Um, so maybe Keith will speak to what SBA is looking for at this time, because there's, there's a little bit of, we're not sure if we wanna commit the parcel unless you know you really wanna do it and you don't know if you really wanna do it.
Get a sense of what it's gonna look like first.
Exactly, so that's a little, um.
It's largely a aesthetic issue for the communities and I think they, you know.
So just off of that, um, it's, there's a cost, right? So SBA is looking at this as, uh, we're gonna throw money at this, um, and then all of a sudden the community comes back, we don't want it. We would rather have the lease, and then they say, hey, we don't want it, we say, okay. We don't wanna have, you know, do all this work and not have a lease or anything to fall back on. Because the community does want it, we expect the town to say, okay, let's build it, you know? Because, you know, you see what I'm saying here is we can't just sign a, we, we want the lease because if the community comes back and says, yes, we want it, and then there, we don't have a lease, and someone just says, hey, we don't wanna do it anymore, even though the community said yes. We, we want that, you know, to really hedge ourselves without spending all this money, yeah, so.
How expensive is it to put something into that airspace that people?
So simulations could, could realistically, and, uh, Janine will have a better number on it, but if you do, if we do like a drone, it's cheaper. If we do, um, balloon test crane, crane rentals are like 10,000 bucks, you know, it's, it's, it gets expensive.
What about the fire department, how big is the ladder that they have there?
I don't know how big, they, they certainly have a ladder that goes up four stories.
I think the Lario bucket's about 100 feet tall.
100 feet, so that's not quite enough, but.
Yeah, it, it's pretty pricey, um, by the time you, you know, you get the field team out to do the, the field work, the crane rental, as Keith said, it can be expensive. And then, um, the actual, um, preparation of the, um, you should study the one mile and, um, the simulations, it, it gets pretty pricey. So it's kind of, you want the simulations, but it's, it's, it's a hard. But I think there might be actually due diligence provision in the master lease that does allow for a six-month period of testing under the master lease. So we can maybe, you know, work something out under the master lease for some sort of testing provision, um, tied to a site agreement.
Janine, like supervisor had mentioned earlier, it's Club Road, we, we, we actually went through this pretty extensively a few years ago, correct, if you recall? Was that, was that a traditional tower or was that more of a?
So, um, so it was, it was, what Elite, um, the prior, um, company was looking at was also a unipole. It was 140-foot, um, unipole, you know, the taller the pole, the greater the coverage, um, again, the area.
This is 20 foot shorter?
This is, ideally the carriers would like, I think, to go higher, um, but, you know, we're cognizant of the towns.
Exactly.
Of the towns, um, you know, like shorter multiple poles is what, um, you know, the town planning, uh, board and department and your code is the preference. Um, but again, due to the terrain in this area and, um, you know, the terrain, geography, the, um, it's just, um, higher would be better. Um, you know, the taller the pole, um, there's really only, you know, back in the day, it used to be five carriers. Now, T-Mobile has acquired Metro and just recently Sprint, so you've got the three main carriers, you've got T-Mobile, Verizon, and, um, AT&amp;T. But as Keith mentioned, they're usually, um, taking up two canister now, two canisters each in, inside a pole. Um, so you are looking to fill like six canisters, and as, um, the supervisor had mentioned, it's line-of-say technology, you have to be above the tree line. Um, the higher you are, the greater the coverage, um, but going back to your, your question, um, so Elite did propose back in the day 140-foot pole. They, I think they did some preliminary, um, uh, data, um, from an RF perspective, but they, we were going to do the, uh, they were going to do the visual study. Um, and then I think it was discovered that there was the existence of this master lease agreement, um, right before we had, I think, the crane test study, uh, excuse me, the visual study crane test scheduled, and then we, um, canceled it, um, so. That's kinda, it never got off the ground with the visuals.
To your knowledge, are there any other municipalities out here that are considering, uh, putting up any kind of cell structures? There's the Village of North Haven, Village of Sag Harbor, Village of Sagaponic, and the town of East Hampton.
Uh, temporarily or like under, cause of the COVID, um, pandemic or permanently?
That we may not be aware of.
Um, I mean, I know as far as East Hampton, there's multiple, um, sites, permanent installations, plus a couple of temporary. Um, I think for Sagaponic, I'm not aware of any, um, um, proposals there. I know years ago, um, years and years ago, it was, um, there was a proposal at Wolfher Estates, um, the vineyard, um, but that, um, went by the wayside. Um, and then, um, North Haven, I think there was a site there back in the day, I wanna say it was a Deer Cemetery that was proposed, um, unusual property. Um, but I don't think that went through and I.
That was on village property.
Okay.
About 12 years ago.
Yeah, and so, but, but with that said, I'm not aware of anything that has moved forward then, so those spots are probably still coverage gaps. But to answer your question, I'm not aware of, just me personally, of, um, any current large-scale proposals, um, in Sag Harbor, Sagaponic, um, you know. Village of Southampton, our office actually worked on, um, on David White's Lane, um, you know, is that lattice tower, the, um, the old Cablevision tower. We did the, um, replacement, all the carriers were getting kicked off of, um, that, uh, tower, and then they went to 145 Powell. Um, that was in the village, um, it's a, it's a traditional monopole actually, right on the tracks over there. Um, so I don't know of any other ones in the Village of Southampton right that, now that are proposed, but I'm not the, and I'll be old, so I'm, I'm not quite sure. But that's pretty much my knowledge. And again, there, there are a lot of coverage gaps out here, cause it's been hard to site. I mean, you come down, wireless has been around since like the late 80s, so, you know, it's, you go up to the low hanging fruit, the co-locations where you can go on existing structures. And now we're kinda faced with the spots where you're closer to residential communities, but it makes it harder to, to site, um, you know, locate a site, but that's where you need the coverage, so all the easier sites were already built, so.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
So I'm still not clear what's next, Janice, um.
Sorry, um, so the, the question really becomes that they want to, we, how to, and I think this comes down to the negotiation of that site lease. How do you make a decision without knowing, you know, what you're getting? Um, and, you know, that's where we're at somewhat of an impasse, um, because they don't want to necessarily go down this road and then be told, um, you know what, forget it. But at the same time, how can you really agree to it if you don't have that information?
Can there be a provision, can there be a provision in the lease that if the community and the town board doesn't want it, that we can break the lease?
Yeah.
I mean, because he had said that if there was a provision in the lease that says the community does want it, then we can move forward. Can we have the opposite?
Well, I just wouldn't want you to get, well, that would be something for the town attorney, yeah.
And we know how this is gonna go, there's going to be members of the community who really want better cell service, that's why we're here discussing this. There will be members of the community who really do not want this pole in this location, and it will be, it will fall to us to make this decision. It's not gonna be a clear choice the way, you know, we're, we're saying it over the, the dais, perhaps.
Yeah, so there's gotta be some, uh, more negotiation on that in terms of how you can structure this. Also, when it said the carriers can go off at any time, the one thing I would point out in the lease, in the alternative, and that, and this is really, you know, not my role, but you don't have any outs. my role, but you don't have any outs. So you might want to consider that. There's no, you can't turn around and say, we don't want this anymore in those old leases. So we want to.
We might be able to negotiate.
Yeah.
If, after they do the visual test and we've decided it's unacceptable.
Yeah, yeah. No, you, definitely, that's, that's.
So it'd be like the preliminary step would be allow for the entry in testing.
They don't want to be out the cost of the visual test. So if we, whatever, well.
Yeah.
Perhaps another scenario is we put it out to bid.
Split that.
We get, we get an incredibly great offer that we just, and we would want to go with perhaps another company. And this company may or may not want to match that offer. And then we're dealing with a different entity. No.
Well, that is, I think.
That's a different route.
To a different route. It just comes down to, I think, initially whether or not this is an appropriate site. Many of the sites that Keith had shown me were CPF-owned, owned by open space, requiring alienations. So those were all discarded. This is just a simple highway yard parcel. So you're clear in that sense.
Are we even allowed to, I mean.
Yes, cell towers are permitted by special exception in any.
No, I was thinking more in terms of municipal bidding requirements. Are we allowed to not RFP it? Are we allowed to go to one particular carrier and say, you can build this on our land without a competitive?
Well, that's a great question. Initially, we did do an RFP to select SBA, but we didn't know that, I, I wasn't involved in that either. I didn't even work.
So maybe that would then.
In 2001.
I didn't come here until 2003.
That might solve that problem. I don't know. Because there was a RFP at that point.
There was an RFP at that point, but this definitely gives them this right of first refusal, you know, on town, if you do seek to put a tower for commercial cellular on town property.
But right now, they believe that this is a, this tower is viable for service, not locate, this is why. You, you expect, but you still need to show that, I'm sure. You have to do the test. You have to, you know, you have to make those connections to be sure that you're getting what you expect you're going to get. So you have to do that.
Well, you have to do it anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah, you should use the mic.
Like I mentioned, we're, we're going to have to appear before the planning board. And in order to make our record to obtain their.
No, I'm sorry. Just what I mean is from a technical standpoint, you don't have, you don't yet know that you have, you think you have a good connection. You think you have a good place for this tower, but there may be a technical reason why you don't. It's highly unlikely, but operating under the assumption that it's a yes is not, not the right way to go.
There were some preliminary radio frequency modeling in, in this location, for this location. And it was, it was viewed as, this is a suitable location to remedy the coverage gap in this area.
All right.
And we'll, we'll submit the empirica data and maps as part of our application to the planning board to support that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The ultimate test is that the carriers want to pay the money to be up there.
Yeah, if, if it wasn't a good site for them, they wouldn't do it.
Yeah, but I don't know what contract they have with you guys. You know, they're making.
Oh, no, they, until a site lease agreement, they won't sign. Until the, the deal basically is locked up with the ground owner, the landlord, you know, in this, in the town, they don't sign.
So it all.
So it'll be, it'll be, yeah. It's usually like a ground owner lease and then the carriers will sublease.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So will they agree to do some visuals before the site lease is the question, I think, that can ask.
And if you would, repeat the question.
Sorry.
Would we agree to do the photo simulations before a site lease? I, I don't have the seniority comment on that. That would have to go through SBA. But we would, I could see them working and saying, hey, look, if the community comes back and, you know, they came with, you know, pitchforks to say they don't want it, you know, yeah, let's cancel the agreement. But we would want something to say, hey, if the community comes back and they, they want it, can we do it, you know? We would definitely want something in there that says, you know, contingent upon feedback, right?
Right. It's always tricky.
Janine.
It's a hard balance.
You know, the community is a group of individuals. There's going to be some that don't want it, that, no matter what, you can be sure. So making that subjective determination, whether there's sort of a consensus in support of it, or whether that broader, you know, desire to have better self-communications outweighs any individual detriment to one of the property owners. That's always a challenging thing.
So even off of that, what?
The greater good, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's a tough.
So we were doing a site out in Eaton's Neck, and they actually did a full, they voted. And it was like 90%. And that was two years ago.
In favor of it.
In favor, yeah. And I will say, the 90% that said yes, and then there's 10%, 10% show up. And they show up, the 90% don't.
The 10% who don't want it are going to be the ones probably closest to those. But once they see what it's going to be, nine out of those 10 will probably go, you know what? It's fine. It's not what I imagined. It's different. It's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Exactly. You don't.
And I have three cell towers near me. I don't even think about it.
It's all about the, you're really educating the community. Because they still, they think of the latest tower that's 300 feet tall, that's red, red and white. And then you show them, no, it's, it's a.
There's a perception.
Yes.
There's a perception with the.
The monopole in the village that Janine mentioned is like maybe a half a mile from me. You don't even know it's there.
Yeah.
The one out of railroad tracks. I was like, oh, is that a, is that a cell tower? It took a while.
That's a, that's a traditional pole. And I think it's 160 he did. That was a couple of years ago. And it's the.
The one right next to the railroad tracks, right?
Yeah, 145.
It's all on the inside, right?
Yeah. No, it's on the outside.
Oh, then I'm thinking of a different.
Oh, you're thinking of the one on literally the, the tracks.
Yeah.
That's, it's a little bit, that's a little further west on 27. That is, that's a light, no. I think that actually is an MTA pole. It's, it's shorter. But the one at 145 Powell, it's, was again, the replacement, like the relo for the David White's Lane.
That's got a lot of stuff on the outside. No, that one.
The David White's Lane, yeah. The, the carriers came off that lattice tower and then went to 145 Powell, which is not the unipole. People call it slick stick, concealed pole. That is traditional mass where they're on platform mass.
Is there a monopole with everything inside in this area that's similar?
61 Foster Bridge Hampton is, we did a couple of years ago.
That's similar to this?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's 120-foot pole.
Okay.
Um, it's right on the tracks. It's, um, 61 Foster in that little industrial area.
You got to drive to find it.
Yeah, it, it looks great. You know, we got pos decked on that and it was a long process. And it was, I was so happy when it got approved, but it looks great once it was.
So yeah, so I'll take a look. Is that white or is gray?
Um, that one, I think we did, it's called like Galvano, I think we did on that one.
Galvanized?
Like, it looks like.
Real blue, to blend with the skyline.
Okay.
Galvanizer, Galvano is like the pink, the Sherwin-Williams pink color.
And that's what we refer for all these, that type of color. Some, some, you know, people say, can we do like a brown ball or a black ball? We kind of push them, say, no, this is going to blend in, you know? You know, people sometimes say they want a green ball.
Sometimes though, what?
Yeah, back to you.
Sometimes, um, we've had some jurisdictions, what they do for some, so this isn't, you know, going to be in the tree line where we've had it, municipalities have asked for brown on the bottom and then the silvery blue on the top. So it's whatever color, you know, the town board as, you know, landlord or the planning board as, you know, wearing their hat, as, you know, jurisdiction with the authority to grant the site plan special exception. And even going back to, to the public and everything. So I understand the town board, you know, of course, you're doing your due diligence for the site agreement and, you know, worried about the community as any, you know, local government would. They do get the second chance, crack at it, you know, it just, you entering into the site agreement. We still have that hurdle to clear of going before the planning board, you know, for the site plan special exception. Obviously, if that board denies it, it's a little bit odd situation. One board enters into a, an agreement as landlord, one board denies it. We have had that situation before. But, but again, the, the public will get second crack before any preliminary CAC meetings or, you know, you know, and they'll be invited to participate in the visual study, whether we enter into, you know, the site agreement or some sort of modified agreement. But it's just, it is a lot of money to spend without like a little bit of warm and fuzzy.
Well, how much is it? I don't know. Because that's, I think.
Like the crane rental, I think Keith was saying, what are they going, like 10, 10,000?
All right. So let's say, let's say it's $10,000 to do the visual study. Worst-case scenario is after the visual study, the community just, nobody wants this thing and we want to back out. We can split maybe the 10,000 or something?
You know what?
Work that out.
That's not a, you know, that's not a bad offer. I would even say, you know, if, if you guys back out, you guys just pay for the study. So if, if, if we go through with it, that becomes our cost. If we don't go through with it, it's the town's cost.
Well, it would be your cost anyway.
Oh, yes. If we build it, yes, we come into it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And I, you, someone, it might have been Jay who brought up like the fire department with the ladder. We, we did that for Terryville, believe it or not. They just brought it out and went, they went 105.
Because, because you were. I thought of that because you were saying something about giving free communications to fire department, police, ambulance, that, that is something in it for them. So maybe they would bring the ladder truck over and put the buck, you know, if it went up that high. And that could keep the cost down of that study.
Only thing with that is just consideration for, I'm assuming it's the North Sea Fire that would, would do it. It takes a couple of hours for the visual study, so I just don't want to, you know, tie up a truck that might be needed for an emergency. I mean, that would be great.
We don't have a lot of 100-story buildings.
So, yeah, I, I just don't know how many trucks they have and, and, you know, but it does take a few hours. I just, if that would be, just want to put them on.
It's the Sag Harbor Fire Department and they have, they have one truck that does this. And they have several four-story buildings.
Okay, okay.
Right, so.
So it does take.
Well, we'd have to talk to them and see if they would make it available for that, tie it up for a few hours. Obviously, if there's a fire, they have to bring it down.
Right, right.
There's life, building, other issue. I think that's.
But, but you were saying Tommy John, Tommy John's a fireman, so that's why I turned to him.
I used to.
You saying they're only 100 feet tall?
Uh, that's what Ryan said. I know.
Technical area is about 100 to 100, 105 is about the, the top on, somewhere around 100 to 103 feet on the average. If you were looking at, you know, something like that a bucket, it might only be 80 or 70 feet.
But that's the reach. That's not the, that's not the.
Hold a microphone, please.
Okay.
All right. So what the testimony from our public safety director was, a typical fire ladder is only about 105 feet roughly. So it may not be sufficient to adequately test it. We might have to go with something else. You know, the, we do have drones. Our police department could put a drone into the space if.
We, we have done visuals with drones lately. It, it is, you know, a cheaper route. A lot of times, you know, when the public does come to the study of whoever wants to participate, you know, they saw the notice, they do, it is easier to find the crane just driving around or just viewing it. But yeah, I, I think we would be open, you know, obviously, you know, drones are less costly. And it is, I know from the drone operators, I know they're able to print out, you know, the GPS coordinates and then the height that it stayed in the air at that exact time. So we have verification that, you know, it wasn't floating 20, 20 feet below. And, you know, this is not an accurate rendering. So I do know, we have utilized that as well. I don't know, again, going into the season, you know, the, the winter season, which actually is ideal for visual studies because it's a worst-case scenario with the leaf-off conditions. So, and that's what we always seek, just so we're not, you know, pulling a fast one on the community saying, oh, yeah, you can't see it. But it's behind the fully leafed tree.
So it strikes me, you know, however, if we could come to terms on if we don't move forward, how the cost of that visual study gets borne. But, you know, the worst-case scenario is a $10,000 study. It seems to.
That's the crane. And then they have to pay for the field. The planners are the field team that goes out and takes the photos and then they give them to usually the firm that uses creative visuals that does.
The renderings?
The renderings, right.
All right. But they could render, they could render off of a drone shot of a, of the drone.
Yes, they can do that as well. Yes.
So what's, what's the cheapest we can get a visual study done for?
I haven't got one down here.
Sorry.
You haven't got one done recently, so I don't want to quote a price. But I do know that towns sometimes do prefer the balloon test, the crown, the crane test is because people can see it, right? So they'll know, oh, yeah, we only took pictures from 20 locations, but they saw, you know, the residents saw it from 1,000 locations, right? With a drone, they don't get that. Because you're not going to see a two-by, two-by-two-foot drone 120 feet in the air more than, you know.
Well, you're not going to notice it.
Exactly. So that's, it is why, the drone would be the cheapest route if the town's okay with that. But if you want to get everyone involved really, where everyone can possibly see it, the best way is the crane slash balloon test.
And what's?
And then with simulations as well.
And what's the, what's the cheapest cost for that?
We could be looking around 20,000. I don't want to quote a direct price. I haven't gotten one in, you know, a year or two.
And you would rent a crane for two weeks and it would just sit there with a flight?
No, it would be for the day.
One day.
Yeah. Even I just, we just got a quote for a crane just to stack the tower. I think it's like 9,500, just, just for the day. And that's just the crane.
I have an unrelated question. This area.
Just before you go on to a different question, because I, this is so critical, I think, as, we, we sort of have to pass a certain threshold so that we can get things moving. And then maybe do a more in-depth visual, but like that initial piece, just so we know if we're even interested in moving forward, then maybe go on and maybe do, do the crane test or whatever it is. But if we could do renderings off of a drone?
Yes.
And get a sense of, and how much, that sounds like it wouldn't be too expensive.
It would be cheaper. It would be cheaper than the crane.
You would have to do the crane for the planning.
For the planning.
Yeah.
Right. But at that point, we would have had an agreement to lease the property, still subject to an opt-out later on if, you know, if there's, the community support isn't there.
Or if the planning.
But I, I'm concerned about even getting to that initial lease without some sense that it's an appropriate site. And I, you know, maybe some of that risk can be at the town's expense is what I'm, is sort of what I'm thinking. I mean, we don't have to solve it right now.
Yeah.
But that's, that's sort of a two-step approach might be, might be the way to go.
Yeah, I want, I want the town and the community to feel very comfortable, you know. I don't want it forced. I don't want any of that. So if it's, if that helps, I think, you know, really having just a light simulation, I think that's a, a great idea to really get it past what we could call the first hurdle, right?
It's not unfamiliar subject here in the town of Southampton. So, you know, I, I think that, that is a good way to be able to, for the residents at this site in particular, because it's been discussed, you know, quite a lot over the years. And there's been opposition and pro, and it always is that way, as you indicated before. But I think to show for that particular site, I think that's definitely, you know, the, the first, first option is the way to go. And then we move on from that point.
I, I do agree. I think, I, and I've told Karen, Janice, the, the opinion has changed. It's, it's changed in the last, since, when was this, 2015? Opinion has changed in five years and it changed even more the last nine months.
No, absolutely.
It's.
And I'm getting tired of, I'm getting tired of calling him.
He's got a tower.
I call him, he's always in that dead zone.
Yeah, that's true.
So he says that.
That's why I call all the time.
You know, I would say, you know, at least, you know, you got, even though you guys don't have the best network, you guys are getting, you know, now, you're not getting monopoles everywhere, right? You're getting the sleek, very nice-looking towers now, you know, even though the network's behind, you guys have the better option compared to where in Nassau you're seeing them all, all the exposed antennas, et cetera.
No, I've gotten a lot, I've received a lot of complaints about cell service this year more than ever. And, you know, and people who have very, very valuable homes that are, you know, heads of big corporations, et cetera, who really depend upon internet connectivity, they don't understand how they could pay, you know, $100,000 in taxes or whatever it is to, and, and not have basic infrastructure at their homes. And, and a concern that they can't call 911 or whatever it might be. They can't, they can't believe it. And they're making these decisions. Do I stay in New York or do I stay out in the Hamptons in the summer home? And it's really, a lot of it is based on that, a lot of it's broadband, you know, internet, but it's also on cellular connectivity. It's amazing how that is now such a factor. And, you know, you know, it's very frequent that we get complaints now about cell coverage. They don't understand it. People are in, I think it's part of it is maybe the capacity, the bandwidth is being used up by so many people on their cell phones.
So even during the summer, I was out here and usually on Main Street you have service. I couldn't send a text.
Yeah.
I was just shocked. I was like, wow.
Yeah.
It's just, it, the.
There's an expectation. Maybe the, you know. So I think we, as public officials, do have to address it. We have to address it, A, with public safety first. That's got to be the main concern, you know, that fire, you know, police, ambulance, and, um, and, you know, and the aesthetics. We have to take the aesthetic, you know, the quality of life issues as well into account, and figure out how we fix the underlying problem in a way that is balanced, you know, is sensitive to all the community concerns. I think we can do it. You know, it's not necessarily easy, but that's, we're elected to do that, so. Um, so I think the way we leave this conversation is, we see if we can come up with a, kind of like a, an initial visual test that just gives us a sense. And then if we get past that small hurdle, then we go into, um, eh, some sort of lease agreement that's contingent upon the next larger visual assessment and community support. But-
I do like that. I like, I think that's a very good compromise, and it's, I think it's going to really educate the public on, on the project.
Does that seem like a good guess?
Yeah.
As a way to proceed?
In addition to that, I'd like, I'm going to reach out to the villages in, on the east to see what they are considering, because I know that this, uh, cell service is, is a problem for the village trustees and mayors as well, and I want to know what their plans are. I know there are other sites east that, that may be even better sites. You know, there's a PSE and G site on, uh, on Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike. I know that's not our property. I don't know if they've ever considered putting something up on there, but it's, it's, um, it's not necessarily a residential area. This is a residential area. You mentioned 61 Foster's. That is an industrial park next to the train track. It's a really, seems like an ideal, well, well, for lack of a better word, uh, more commensurate with the area. Um, and, uh, you know, this one is not. So, I, you know, I, I wouldn't mind taking a look at other sites as well to, you know, fully vet what we want to do as far as coverage on the eastern portion of the town.
Okay. So, I can, I can prepare an access agreement for SBL, or, you know, with their attorney, Janine, and, um, that will allow them access to the property to do this either balloon test or the, or the drone, whatever, you know, the, the board would like. And then we can come up with some sort of agreement as to the, who pays for the cost if, you know, if it doesn't go through. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure, I would just, during the interim, I can also just-
Good, come up before we, before Charles comes running out.
Um, I can also send to Cara and Janice for the board's consideration, um, the temporary ballast mount structures, you know, just so you can see examples of it. I had mentioned East Hampton is doing that at the Stephen Hans Path. Just, you know, something again to consider.
Yeah, I'm going to go look at the 61 Foster site, too.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's the Unipole. I think, uh, 120 we were put down.
And is that temporary site up, the one in Wayne Scott, or no?
Uh, the one, I don't know if the one in Wayne Scott's up yet, um, and the, uh, no, I, I don't think it's up yet, right? They didn't, they didn't get it up yet.
Okay.
Um, but something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again for everyone's time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's, uh, let's move on to our next topic. Ryan has been patiently waiting, but I, I think that you probably were interested in the cell tower communication piece as well, so it wasn't an entire waste of your time.
It's not at all. Uh, and from the public safety perspective, it's certainly something that, uh, we think about as well. Um, you know, we have issues up in some of those same areas with, uh, connectivity with some of the officers that are up in the area for their mobile data terminals and their vehicles and things like that, that would also benefit from better coverage. So, you know, not speaking to the site or any of the, the, the more finite details of, you know, what planning would address with it. Um, it's something of interest on the public safety side. Um, and, and we could definitely use better coverage up there. But, to go and switch topics, uh, this is a, uh, this is something that we've, we've started taking a look at. Um, one of the things that we have issues with from the, the code enforcement and fire marshal side of things with, uh, property maintenance issues and, and, uh, lighted and/or dilapidated properties that we start to encounter here and there, is that oftentimes that they've gone into foreclosure, they're, they're either abandoned or they're, they're, um, bank-owned at that point, and we struggle to get the property maintenance handled on that. The board entertained a resolution last night for, for 215, um, Long Neck, right? 215 Long Neck, with regards to an issue very similar to this with, you know, property maintenance concerns, where we've struggled to get in touch with the individuals responsible for the property at different points, or to have reliable communications with them. We have a, a similar issue that came to us, um, in the Eastport area that, that May and I have been working together on trying to, to deal with. There has been some public outcry from the community with regards to the maintenance on the property, and that one happens to be a situation where it's a, a bank-owned property, which prompted the conversation to occur between us. Uh, May has some, some dealings with the company that we'll, we'll highlight for you in a second as, uh, one possible avenue that we could go down to solve this problem. Um, from her dealings with them through Town of Riverhead, um, I will say that, that, what we're going to talk about here is something that has been similarly addressed in a variety of other municipalities within the, the county and, you know, with, on the island. Um, in Suffolk, uh, there, the same type of program and the same type of relationship exists between, uh, the, the company will, will highlight here, ProChamps, and, uh, Town of Babylon, Town of Riverhead, uh, Town of Islip, Village of Babylon, and several other different municipalities. And we, we provided a lot of that information in your packets so that you can, uh, have that all as reference documents. So, there, there are a couple of different, you know, companies out there that basically go through, uh, the searches and data listings, um, and whether that's list pendants and, and other information that they pull from for foreclosure information. Um, but the, the company that we're speaking about here, that we've had some conversations with because of these relationships that they have with other municipalities within the county, successful relationships at that, um, has other ways of also aiding in the communications capabilities with the responsible, either banks and/or property management companies associated with foreclosure properties, okay? The, the idea here in the bigger picture is to stop, uh, properties from falling into this condition to begin with, but, but also if they do happen to go down that road, to be able to have a reliable communication method to get in touch with and have reliable data to get in touch with the responsible property owners and managers, so that we can get the properties attended to. Um, so there's, there's kind of a bigger picture here. And as we go through the whole thing, I can explain to you, you know, what I would hope to see as the goal of, uh, this program as, as a big picture. Um- May, maybe you just want to hit an arrow. So, the company that we have been communicating with that has the, the same program in place in Riverhead, Babylon, Islip, et cetera, is a company called ProChamps. The, the goals that they have are identifying at-risk properties, identifying properties that are either in foreclosure or at risk of foreclosure. They get that data from a variety of different sources and will identify that as we go through here. And they, they, we would then be able to draw down that data off of their system. Um, they would assume the active responsibility of, of obtaining the appropriate information about these properties so that we have the right people that we can talk to, as opposed to us having to dedicate the man-hours and time and resources to try and pull this data from the numerous different sources that they get from on a regular basis. The, the goals are to try and, you know, deal with some of the items that you see on the, the right-hand side of that slide, you know, unmaintained properties, situations with, you know, noise complaints that we get, excessive illegal parking. We get, you know, situations where we can have squatters appear on these properties and start to, uh, reside there illegally without any kind of rental permits and do things to the property that we wouldn't otherwise approve of because nobody's looking in on it. This would allow us to have the appropriate information to reach out to the people that are responsible for the property and get in the way of these types of complaints and problems from coming up from, from the outset. That's, that's the goal here. The, the, the main goal, as I said, compliance, this just illustrates the, the whole process by which we would go through that. They would get the information, identify the properties for us. Um, we would then make outreach to the properties, get them registered. We would create, the idea is to implement a, uh, registration system for foreclosed properties. It would make a requirement of the bank to register the property and provide us with the appropriate contact information for those properties. The idea would be every six months for this registration to occur, because foreclosed properties tend to change hands somewhat frequently. And it ta- doesn't place any of the burden of the registration or registration fee on the private citizen within the town of Southampton. It falls onto the banks. So, it does two things. It gets us-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify. So, that would be banks nationally, internationally, otherwise, not just-
Any.
Any, okay.
Whoever the, whoever the bank is that held the property would be the responsible party.
Thank you.
All right. And they would provide us with their information as the property owner, as well as if they have any contracted entity or vendor that was handling the property management and maintenance of the property, to provide that to us as well. So, for example, you know, uh, the property that we've been dealing with out in Eastport, we would get the bank information. We've just recently been able to get a hold of, after months of struggle, a property management company's information, and have started to try and force them to go in and take the necessary steps on the property. But meanwhile, it's gotten to the point where residents have become increasingly bothered by, as well as concerned with the state of the property, and it's been a struggle to get in touch with the right person to get in there and get the job done, and to hold them accountable. And, and oftentimes, and the reason we do, we would, we'll ask for a six-month registration on this is because, like I said, foreclosure changes hands a lot between bank-to-bank where they sell them off. Um, we want to make sure we have the most current and reliable information possible and make sure that we know who to hold accountable if the property's not being maintained to the standard that we want.
Would that also include title as well? I, I know in one case that I'm thinking of where, where it's, someone had used a different part of their property to collateralize a mortgage on another part of their, of their property on a structure, and there was an issue there. Uh, is that, and that led to the same kind of situation that you're talking about, where one structure, you know, was just basically in decay and no, no title could be found, no, 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 no owner could be found. A bank was someplace in, in the south somewhere, and that's where it was kind of left. But, that kind of thing as well with this, or is it just banks?
Yes, they research, they, they draw down the data from all of that.
Okay, great.
They use the, the county data, they use IRS filings, they use all sorts of stuff. Um, they have other services that they offer, even with regards to monitoring that they do for rental properties and trying to identify them. That's not what we're looking to utilize this for. It's specifically for, for closed properties. Um, but the same company is ingesting data from countless other sources, so we, we have a, a better mechanism of being able to obtain the right information about the property.
Our current system, Ryan, is, is that the town of Southampton has to do the research. The onus is on us to find out who owns that property on whatever street and whatever, which one of our hamlets-
Correct.
-that's falling into decay, and it could be anywhere. I, I mean, these banks, and, and it goes from hand-
And the, the banks use different names a lot of times that they'll register them under that doesn't, don't make it so easily, easy to track back to the bank. A lot of times you'll see, I, I believe the name that we've seen on a bunch of them is like a Mr. Cooper or something like that, that one of the banks likes to use. And it looks like it's a private individual, but it's actually the bank and the way they, they prefer to list the properties. It makes it a bit of a challenge for us-
Right.
-to, to, to hold them accountable for when they don't do the right thing with the property.
It seems like some are being evasive.
Yeah, well, then-
They don't want to be found because-
They have a bank of mortgage, they, they sell the mortgage, so-and-so, he's selling so-and-so, so.
It's Domino's.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there are judgments against a property, then it would be difficult for us, excuse me, Julie, uh, to ascertain who pays that.
Right.
Okay.
And when you say a six-month registration, that means that they follow up every six months?
Yes. And the, the, the nice part about that is that we don't have to chase them for that. That's what we would, that would, is what we would turn to a company like this to go out and do, to do the outreach, to get the registration taken care of, and form the banks of the code requirement, because part of this is that we would be looking to implement a new code requirement that would drive this in that direction. Um, and that's what we're talking about this year today.
And that's the attachment that Riverhead did, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have the same code requirement for Babylon and Islip that they provided us, as well as other samples. We just didn't want to inundate you with, with, with paperwork here. Um, that's what we're having this conversation about here today, before we move the proposed code requirement before the board, to, to kind of just feel out the waters here and make sure that there's an appetite to move forward with this, um, you know, possible program. So, these are just, this, this is how the, the-
Do we, we pay a prescription fee to ProChamps?
So, the way it would work is, is not really. The, the fee that was attached to the registration requirement in the code, whatever that fee is, and typically it's $500, and, and I believe that was included in the packet as well, um, the samples of fees from other municipalities throughout the county and, and all over into Nassau as well. Um, it ranges anywhere from 200 to 500 dollars, and again, that's the fee on the bank, not on the, the resident of the town of Southampton. Um, the, the company takes $100 off the top of that. And then as the registrations come in, they pass forward. They serve as a pass-through, basically. They would collect the registration and they conduct the pass-through to us. So, when they showed us examples, they showed us examples from a village up west, uh, in Nassau, that they had presented us with the payments that then went on to the village each month. So, one month the, the payment to the village was $14,000, another month it was $98,000, another month it was $114,000, and that's the village's share after they take the $100. That was the village's share of the registration fee that's required by the code. I believe their registration fee was $500 every six months. Um, and so, ProChamps got 100 out of that, the village got 400 out of it.
So, that only applies if a bank takes-
Correct.
-control of a property.
Once it's in foreclosure, once it's bank-owned and in foreclosure.
So, it'll cost them $1,000 a year to have a foreclosed house in Southampton Town?
Yeah, I think the big thing is, is also the way that they, they take this data, they, they find, you know, deeds and everything like that, and they actually project which homes are going to go into foreclosure. So, when we've done the presentation with ProChamps, they actually, um, felt that around 300 properties were going to fall into, either are in foreclosure, and then I think it was around 100 more are going to fall into it.
Yeah, at the time that we, we spoke with them-
Yeah.
Um, and Councilman Martel, May, and myself sat through a, a webinar, basically, with ProChamps. Um, they had identified 270 properties within the town of Southampton that were already in foreclosure. There were some at-risk properties also identified. So, they told us that the safe estimate would be about 300 properties annually that we would be dealing with, that would be in need of filing for this registration. They said we could make an assumption of using the number 300 in terms of the number of properties.
It's probably going to be a lot more the next year.
And the idea behind making them register is so that we know who's in charge of that house?
Correct, correct. Well, on a normal basis, you have a problem with the property, you, you look up the data on our system in GIS, in government, in land management, and we would be able to identify who was the deed at owner of the property. Once a property goes into foreclosure, that changes a lot, and it's very difficult to try and find out who the, the appropriate and current owner is of the property, to then make outreach to that person to do anything about the property, or to hold them accountable if they are doing, aren't doing something about it, or refuse to do something about the property. And that becomes a real challenge for us. And the reason, like I said, with the six-month registration on it, is because, as, as Jim indicated too, uh, banks sell off these mortgages once they're in foreclosure, and so they change hands a lot. And it, imagine what the tracking issue is for us at that point, to try and find the right party to reach out to and get anything done on a property like this. It becomes a real challenge. That's for property maintenance. It becomes a real challenge for the fire departments and the police departments. If something occurs on a property, you have a fire on a property that's in foreclosure, that's bank-owned, you need it boarded up and secured, who do you reach out to? How do you get in touch with them? Well, if we don't have the right information on that, it becomes a real, real challenge for us there, too, and then becomes not just more of a nuisance to the community, it becomes a real safety concern for the community, too. You have, you know, squatters or a, a potential criminal element that seems to be making use of an abandoned property that's bank-owned and in foreclosure. We need to be able to, to reach out to the right individual to try and gain access to that structure, to go in and do what we need to do for those types of purposes. So, from a maintenance perspective, this is an important thing, but from a community safety perspective, knowing who the right people are to get in touch with, to get action, as well as to hold accountable if there's no action or not the right action, is really important for us. important for us.
Can I just interrupt real quick? When you say to reach out to the people who are now on the house, that's, if the house is in foreclosure, that's a bank, right?
Right.
So we're reaching out to a bank so they can take care of, maintain the property?
Yep.
Not an owner. I do have one more question about at-risk properties. Do we do anything to try to assist those at-risk properties?
So we do now. We've had for a few years now, before I even came on board, a zombie grant that was given to the town, and we've run at the end of the zombie grant program. And we had a zombie ranger, for lack of a better term, it was an ordinance inspector-
Perfect for Halloween, though.
It is perfect, you don't even need to dress up. For lack, that was what we called the individual for all this time, but to break it down, it was an ordinance inspector that was going out, and their goal was to identify these types of properties, identify properties that we had significant property maintenance issues at, where it seemed that they were occupied still, but they were a struggle, or that they were unoccupied, but we needed to try and track down the owner. That was a part-time staff member, and it really probably could have been given to a full-time person with the amount of energy that has to go into trying to track these people down and get in touch with them. As you can imagine, if it's somebody that's struggling on borderline foreclosure, a lot of times there's, there are other issues there that they don't want to have contact with us. That could be part of the reason, there could be mental health issues, all sorts of things, whether it's embarrassment, whether it's an unwillingness, it doesn't matter, they dodge that contact. And then we were also partnered with a butterfly effect out of Riverhead, who was providing caseworker-type assistance to people, trying to connect them to resources and services we're out there. In all honesty, to kind of cut to the chase on the grand vision of this plan, if you took 300 properties and you said that the registration fee was, you know, $500, ProChamps gets $100 off the top of that, and we come out with $400 on each one for the town of Southampton, and you take 400 times our share, times the 300 properties, that's $120,000, you multiply that times two for six months registration time period, so in a year we should get that registration twice, that's $240,000 a year. Couple of part-time staff members, I would see us bringing this in-house at that point, maybe not even contracting out. I've spoken to Diana Weir about the possibility, and we're already working with them in the absence of continued grant funding for the zombie program. We're working between code enforcement and community development to address some of those needs that we've identified over the last several years. I would see us being able to potentially fund the zombie ranger through the revenues generated from this, and as well as potentially fund a part-time caseworker in-house to be able to provide those types of assistance, and if possible, put the remaining revenue generated from the program into housing and community development for, you know, affordable housing programs and other types of, you know, assistance that we might be able to provide through that office.
Instead of us having to search out these at-risk-
Exactly.
...or giving the information.
So by not having to get this information and harvest it ourselves, it's an immediate savings to the town. We right now pay the county to get judgments and lis pendance information. Right off the bat, by not having to do that, it's a $5,000 to $7,000 a year subscription that we have to pay the county to get that data and do that data drawdown. The company would get that data and do that instead of us. So we're saving money right there. The effort that has to go into trying to get all that information would then come off of our plate as well, and we would just be able to go into their system and get the information as well. So I think we could create, by implementing a code like this requiring the registration and then utilizing the revenue generated from the registration, I think we could really create our own self-sustaining, you know, zombie assistance program in-house, where the money we need to have a ranger out there, to provide caseworker assistance to people to try and avoid a property becoming a zombie property, avoid a property going into foreclosure, is generated through the registration fees paid by the banks that are registering these foreclosed properties. That's the way to picture here.
One thing that, you know, about the zombie program, and a lot of what you're saying is absolutely understood having lived through it, but there's another aspect to it that I think should be brought up, was that part of, part of the byproduct, and that's the people that you worry about that can slip through the cracks through no fault of their own, seniors who are housebound, and they can't get their lawns mowed, or whatever might happen, suddenly they are labeled as a zombie home, and in fact, that's not what's happening. And that's a critical element here that needs to be considered in all of this, and that's, I think that's why that program, you know, wanted to tread lightly, because quite often you found it was just somebody who was housebound, a senior who, you know, was just living right on the edge, and because they couldn't care for their property, it became labeled-
Right.
...that way, as opposed to what was factually happening with that person who just needed some assistance.
Right, and that's why I think that if we look at this program holistically, and try and, you know, not just look at the code requirement, the registration aspect of it, but look at what we could do with the revenue generated from the registration as a mechanism to avoid having people like that be inaccurately labeled, avoid having the property go too far gone, we could dedicate some of this towards, you know, light mitigation, or whatever we want to, however we want to handle it, I think we could use this to fund the programs that we've already been engaging in successfully, to deal with properties such as that, to try and get people the assistance that they need to not lose a property, or to not have to suffer any kind of punitive action for inability to maintain a property when it's not that they don't want to maintain it, it's just for whatever reason they can't maintain the property. We already try and work with people as much as we can in that matter, and I think this will aid us in continuing to do that, at the same time as allowing us to be able to have a better handle on the properties that are already in foreclosure.
Ryan, does ProChamps have numbers and statistics on some of their other municipalities? One of the aspects of a program like this, I think, would be to get houses from foreclosure back into active occupancy, which I believe is what we want, and as town board members, of course, we want people living, renting, whatever, in these houses and not having them sit dormant. So I'm wondering if ProChamps has any data on the time, using their system, if it would decrease the time from foreclosure to reoccupancy?
So I'm not, I'm not aware of the stats, and we can ask them for the statistics on that, so for, say, a jurisdiction pre-ProChamps to after implementation of a code and, you know, connecting with a company like them, if they saw a time decrease in the amount of time that a house sat in foreclosure before it was then reoccupied.
Right.
One thing that they have stated is that by having the registration, it's one more motivating factor to compel a bank, rather than continue to pay the registration fee to move the house back into occupancy faster. I haven't seen the statistical data to go along with that, but anecdotally, they have mentioned that it is a factor, it is a motivating factor, it's one more thing that a bank doesn't want to continue to have to deal with-
That would make-
-and kind of compels them to get the house reoccupied faster, sooner than later. Or to work with a person to try and avoid the foreclosure process too, you know. The second that it's going to start to cost them money, and that somebody's going to hold them accountable for the maintenance, which is going to cost them money too, because I think that's part of it as well. It's, now there's an accountability there, whereas before, if it was hard to find them, hard to get in touch with them, hard to hold them accountable for what they weren't doing, you know, it's just sitting, the property's just sitting, there's no money getting invested into it, they can sit and wait, it's not costing them anything. Well, now you're going to be held accountable for that property, so you're going to pay a registration fee, and we're going to make sure that you're cutting the log. We're going to make sure that if there's openings that appear on the property because of, you know, animals getting in or whatever, that you're dealing with that stuff, and they're not going to want to sit and hold on to it and become the property maintainers for longer than they need to be, they're going to want to get it into somebody else's hands.
Beautiful.
Is this primarily for vacant homes, Ryan?
Any home in foreclosure will be registered.
You know-
You know, so that we have the bank for me.
I mean, it sounds like a helpful tool, and I think we have to drill down a little bit on what you can legitimately charge for the registry. You know, obviously the company takes $100, has to be at least $100, but you can't just assign a fee to something if it's not commensurate with the cost to the town, or, so we have to be a little bit careful about how much we can charge.
Right.
I'd like to see what other towns are charging for that.
The lowest number that any other town is charging is 200. I would say 80% or better of the towns are at the $500 mark, and there is a threshold of $500 that when you exceed that mark, it becomes problematic for the banks, it requires them to get approval. That's why so many different towns that you'll see on that list are at the $500 mark.
Some of them are for a year and some are for six months. They're all, most of them seem to be at 500, but-
Yes.
But that year number means that they just follow up in a year-
Right.
...versus follow up in six months.
Some are 500 for six months.
I also have a concern, just to, you know, just lay this out there, that we inadvertently hurt certain communities that are hurt disproportionately, given whatever the situation might be, where it might be and so forth. And I, you know, I worry about that it could be perceived as targeting or redlining as opposed to what you're proposing. I would want to be really sure that it doesn't lead to that kind of review. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. I think the fact that it doesn't impact any of the residents, they're not the ones that are accountable for paying these fees, so there's no additional out-of-pocket on the part of our town residents. If anything, if there was a community that was, or a segment of a community that was a struggling, you know, area where we started to see more foreclosures than in other places, it might actually encourage the lenders to try and work with those clients better so that they avoid having the property go into a position where it needs to be registered and they have to then become the maintainer of the property, so.
Well, I think particularly in the context, and having lived this in a time of my life, that there are, there are areas in, when you're going to try to take a house that's gone through this process and now it's empty, but you want to have it reoccupied, you want to reuse, it becomes gentrification in some ways, because the costs of doing that rise, the cost of that home now rise for a particular tenant or an owner, those things, you know, you can inadvertently affect those costs.
Sure.
And you have to be really cognizant of that.
Sure. On the flip side, our summonses are worth more than the registration. If we have to go the route of punitive action and issuing summonses to a property for failure to maintain their property, that still could get issued to the exact same bank that would be paying the $500 registration fee, and at the end of the day, they're going to pay more in legal charges and court summonses that if they had to add those on to what they wanted to recover on the sale of the property, it would escalate that even more. So by taking a proactive approach to it, I think, and encouraging them to not get into that point, by knowing who the right people to talk to, I think we could actually make that value stay down, you know, as opposed to having to go the punitive route where we don't know who to get in touch with, where we don't have an active dialogue with them, we don't have the right information, and then the property is tied up in court, and there's violations on the property that now hold up the sale of the property, the transfer of the property to somebody else, because it's not going to come up with clean title when we have those violations sitting on it, and any of the judgments that are rendered against it, because, you know, we don't even know who the right person to get in touch with, or the corporate headquarters doesn't send a representative, and so some sort of a, you know, summary judgment is issued against them, and that just gets slapped right on to the taxes. So I think-
Understood.
You know-
What I'm trying to get at is that, what I, you know, from your standpoint, I could see that. What I'm trying to get to is that if we drill down and look at the experience of some of these municipalities in this regard, you know, what happened before, what was the experience that occurred, was there some unforeseen consequence as a result of that? I would love to, you know, understand that, that, you know, what was the positive and were there negatives, and, you know, what are the things that we might not be thinking of in trying to, you know, get to this narrow issue of trying to solve the foreclosure problem as opposed to all the rest-
Any unforeseen fallout that might have occurred.
Yeah, that's all.
I mean, there are many different, at least two, but probably more categories of, you know, homes that are in foreclosure. Typically, now the courts, especially now with COVID-19, it can take upwards of almost 10 years sometimes for a bank to get an actual judgment of foreclosure through the process now. So during that time, many times people live in it, it's occupied, it's like nobody even knows. Our neighbors, some of our neighbors are in foreclosure right now, we're not aware of them, we shouldn't be aware of them. Then, and then the bank will actually get the judgment, and then they'll hold the sale, if they don't do a renegotiation with the owner, they'll hold the sale at the town hall here, wherever it is, and then it gets purchased by somebody. And during that time, maybe the person gets out and the person coming in doesn't want to occupy, they want to sell to somebody else, and it could be vacant at that time. Or sometimes the bank doesn't, has to buy back, it doesn't get sold by somebody, so the bank holds it. And those times, especially if it's, maybe it's not a home that's in disrepair, those become, I guess, typically what we usually call like the zombie homes, so I think those are the ones that are the main issue here.
Yeah, and I think that's the, that's the right use of it, you know, I'm just concerned that if, the use could widen and it could have some unforeseen circumstances, you know, and things change and things happen, I just, you know, want to be really clear, you know, that's an important part of this.
And really, you know, since March, since the first government order, governor's orders or foreclosure process has pretty much stopped.
As well as convictions.
Right, 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 so.
Right.
So you're thinking that's all on hold, the judges I know who do this, they're all on hold, and so this is backing up. And of course, with the economy, it's, that's backing up too, so, you know, we're probably looking at a two or three-fold situation next year, once it starts going again.
I mean, from my standpoint, you know, and I've been the one singing this, to do this, but for a different reason, was to try to find landlords who, you know, were absolutely unscrupulous in the way they rented out their properties and then disappeared off the record, and we could never find them, because I always felt that they were responsible, not the tenants that are, you know, were given a lease, and they had no idea that their landlord is that way. And that, I think, is a really important thing. If we can find that guy, you know, who does-
Well, that's something that obviously we do on a regular basis.
Yeah, no, and it's a big burden, so much-
And this is not landlord/tenant, this would only kick in after a judgment on a property from a bank presumably.
Right, but we would have a database.
Right, we'd be put in place, and then we would get the database on who actually owns it, okay.
Right.
And I think that's the beauty of it, is that because of the communication, the process moves faster. So the bank now is alerted to the foreclosure, instead of just putting in an envelope, here's my foreclosure, they're on top of the property, and then the top, once it goes to a management company, they're on top of that, they're keeping the property from getting to that blighted zombie state that, you know, where we worry about. I will say one thing, John, about that, is that I would not want to see ProChamps identifying 15 properties in a neighborhood, and all of a sudden the lender does not want to lend money to a particular area of town.
Which is illegal when it's called redlining.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, Rick, I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, we could work on that in whatever way from our side, but obviously they would be breaking, you know, other laws in the process of doing something like that, and we would hope that that would not be the case. We have not heard of anything like that happening. We can reach out to colleagues in the other townships again and just make sure that there hasn't been any observable, you know, fallout of that type, you know, in any of those places, just to follow back.
I mean, it protects you, it protects the town, but it also protects people that through no fault of their own find themselves in a situation that, you know, that could have been avoided.
Sure.
And I like the aspect of this in that regard, just worried about the-
Unintended.
Yeah.
Right, right.
As always.
And you'd like to keep any list as private as possible, you know, you don't want, you know, as I said, there's thousands of people that are in some type of foreclosure every day.
Well, like we said, 270 the other day when they ran the data.
Right, right.
With judgments.
Yes, and they're already in.
We're not looking for people who are in foreclosure, or, you know, didn't Mr. Cain in or something.
Yeah.
These are properties that are post-judgment-
Bank-owned.
Right, bank-owned.
Just a bank-owned.
Yep, that's important.
That's a big difference.
Yep.
And what if they, what if they don't pay the, whatever it is, the fee? So it's, it's this potentially the company that bills that, right?
Yes.
It collects for us?
Yep, and then shows us a pass through to get it to us. So we don't have to chase them back.
They make the bank aware that the town has this code, assuming we pass the code.
Right.
That's required to do that. So they would pass along to us anyone who refused to pay?
Yes.
Or would they put the lien on themselves?
No, no, it would come to us. It would come to us. So they conduct outreach to make the banks aware of the fact that the code is in existence. And when they, when they draw down the data from the systems that they pull it from, they identify these bank-owned properties and then would send communication to those, those banks to inform them of the code requirement. And it's the same thing that they're doing in other places. The bank would then remit the registration fee that's required by the code. They would take their $100 off of it and pass through the rest of it to us. I would see us then dedicating that, that revenue generated from the registrations towards these, you know, zombie assistance programs and, and other community outreach programs that we might be able to conduct to try and, and keep this list small.
Banks have not challenged this requirement anywhere?
I asked that question. They, they have not had any opposition show up, um, by and large, whenever these types of code.
How do you get, how do you get, how do they get off the list? They sell the property?
Yeah.
And then they just have to, does the new person have to notify to get off the list? The old person or?
No, it'll, it comes through when, when they, when they get the data from the county and through other sources, the property just won't appear on the list any longer.
Well, there's got to be a title change, right?
Right, exactly. So the, the, the record of owner will change.
Is there proportional reimbursement if they pay $500 for a yearly fee? And a month later now?
Oh, because they could sell it off in a month too. And the new registrant would have the responsibility to register.
They don't, they don't get the balance of their 500, okay. All right. All right, any other questions?
Are there other companies that do this that you know?
There, I, I'm, as I mentioned before, there are other companies that, that search through the data to try and obtain this type of information. I believe that what sets this company apart from some of those is the, there are interfaces and communication capabilities that exist with this platform that can serve as a redundant mechanism for us to be able to do outreach to the, um, the banks and the property management companies. So we would prefer to use the platform primarily as a data source for us and use them as an outreach entity to, to help us accomplish these goals. Um, but if we're not able to, through our normal methods of, you know, whether it's mailing out notices of violation or, or conducting outreach through our, you know, our emails here or sending out letters, if we're not able to connect with the people appropriately, there are other ways to do that through their platform. And I think that's one of the, the unique offerings that they have is some of the platform communication capabilities. So that, that may be, we believe they may fall into kind of a sole source category because of that component of what they have to offer in terms of on the procurement side of this. Um, either that as a sole source or piggybacking on existing contracts that, that are in place with, you know, either Riverhead or Islip or Babylon or one of the other municipalities.
That was my next question. You, you gave us a list of the municipalities on Long Island.
Yes.
That are currently using this and they currently have legislation.
Yep.
So those things are, okay.
The, uh, so they would give us, this company or whoever we use would give us a list of every property that has been foreclosed. Where does that list then reside? Is it foilable if somebody wants?
Well, there's the data that they're.
Can somebody in the public say, I want to see all the foreclosed properties?
You can get that anyway. The reason that they can get.
They pay for that. They have to pay a service to get a list of foreclosed properties.
Yes, but you could foil for the same data.
It's, I'm not, I'm not sure that you can do that. There are some privacy issues with that, right? Jim, I, that's a good question.
If, if there's a judge, well, there's less privacy if there's actually been a judgment of foreclosure and a bank owns them now. You know, if they're in the process, you certainly don't want to listen to that. You know, I don't want people knocking people's doors. You can get it, people do it. I mean, this is a whole under business that goes on it. People actually troll the, uh, the county, uh, church's office and they look to see who hasn't paid their taxes.
Right.
And that's an indication, you know? So they, I mean, that happens. People, this is a whole.
If somebody's two years in arrears.
Yeah, they know, and then so then they can track it. But, um, and then they look at the court records and they see what properties, uh, or have a actual foreclosure pending on them. You can do those things. It's much more effort to try, you know, have to do yourself a lot than to, you know, to foil a list that we might have. But yeah, if it's a list of properties that just have been foreclosed, that have been foreclosed on, have a judgment of foreclosure by the bank and a bank owned, those at that point.
So what happens if this, a company like this makes a mistake? And we act on a mistake? And we become liable for that mistake? What, what arrangement is, does that, this organization have to protect us?
Because they would be actually sending a notice to the property owner saying your property was, you know, foreclosed. I suppose the property owners, that's not the case.
As the bank, the property owner being the bank.
Yeah, the bank might say, no, I don't.
If the bank says, no, we don't own the house yet, we're not paying the fee, then.
But how are we protected against mistakes that we can't think of? I'm just asking the questions I think anybody should ask.
What would be a hypothetical mistake? This is.
They send out a letter to a wrong address.
To a bank?
Yeah.
To a wrong bank?
Uh-huh.
Well, unless the, if the bank paid it, they got the, if the bank paid, got the letter.
People make mistakes.
Yeah, if the bank got the letter and paid it, which I would think that they would be scrutinizing the letter as well to make sure that they were the responsible party that should be paying for it. And then it was found to be that they paid it in error, then we would simply return the, the registration fee to them because they weren't the accurate individual that had paid it.
And when you say individual, you mean bank?
Bank, I, yeah, I would stick to saying bank instead of individual.
Organizations are individual.
Yeah.
A fall rate concern if it's bank-owned properties, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know what I'm?
Yeah, no, yeah, sure. And you don't want, people have, you know, somebody's going.
They, they, their reputation.
I haven't reached a judgment of foreclosure.
Blah, 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 you know, I just, just think it out loud.
Right.
This is mainly just to be like a community partner with ProChamps. So it's, it's pretty much to foster the communication between the town and the property owner. Because a lot of times what's happening is, is we have no, you know, we have no communication, a lack of communication. So anything besides that, it's primary, primarily between ProChamps and the bank because they're the ones who are really collecting this data, formulating this.
I, I understand that, May, but, you know, I'm also cognizant that people and organizations can make mistakes. So it's a question, I think, is.
Right.
I understand the intent. I think the intent is good. I just worry about the, the quality of.
Right.
The organization behind it.
I'm saying more of that communication wouldn't be from the town. It, it would be from ProChamps and, and the bank.
Can we find out some information if any of the other municipalities have gotten misinformation?
Yeah, we can definitely ask questions, I'm sure.
We have a general idea of how many of these are sitting, you know, almost what we typically consider as zombie homes, like vacant homes that are.
Out of the 270 that they identified?
Yeah.
Well, we know we have, I believe it was somewhere in the range of 90 to 100, um, vacancies as of the last count that I think my office did.
Yeah, that's a good amount.
Associated with the previously existing zombie grant program.
Right, that's a good amount. But yeah, I actually thought it was more, but.
I think it was right around 100.
Yeah, okay.
And considering our need for housing in, in the town and on South Fork in general, something like this could, could help get these entities to move these properties along and get, get folks living in them in some way, shape or form.
Right.
No, if we could end up, right, if, sure, if you could kind of foster some type of line of communication where the bank is now holding a, you know, they've done the, the, the sale, you know, the foreclosure sale at the steps of town hall and nobody's purchased it. So now they own it, you know? It's like kind of when I was in the county, the only time that real estate's not an asset to you is if you're the county or you're a bank like this. It's not an asset to the bank, so, you know, it's a burden to them, you know?
See, I think the banks in some ways have a responsibility here. If they take, you know, if they foreclose on a property and then they let it sit and they decide, you know, they do the, maybe they mow the lawn once in a while, but the property itself now is out of code and there's an expense to make that property in code so that it can be occupied and used for all the good reasons we're talking about. But they have the responsibility to do that, but that never happens, you know? So you do end up with a property, foreclosed, and now you want to do something with it, but you've got to invest. Somebody has to invest money in that.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I think that that's one of the big goals here is to make sure that they are maintaining, they are maintaining it and it doesn't get to the point where, you know, it falls into such disrepair.
No, and I.
Comes an unappetizing property for a new homeowner to come into and, and take possession of. And I think if we really look at big picture, if you had, you know, 300 registrants and, and we were able to use some of it to, to keep the zombie ranger out there, to maybe get a caseworker, you know, on, on our side to continue to conduct outreach to have properties avoid going into this position and roll the additional into community development and housing, we could then use some of that to provide assistance to first-time home buyers or whatever the case might be and get some of these houses reoccupied faster. I, I, I would perceive this as a, as a self-sustaining positive program where we're out there trying to keep this list small and keep people from having to need assist, you know, need assistance or get them the assistance that they, they do need. And then also utilizing it, you know, to, to get the information from the banks to keep the properties maintained. It, I see it as kind of like whole community trying to address the different issues that we have, you know?
And I, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I also.
Looking at the other possible fallout stuff.
I've seen the other side of this.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
We may actually be either an identified buyer or helped to be fine buyers. If, if, look, we use the same term, John, I think, is if we know about this, then maybe we start coordinating with our housing department.
Right, if she's got a list of people.
Right, or even for a while, put somebody in, like we did at the county. We used to at times, when we foreclosed on a piece, uh, on a, on a house, we knew it was going to be three or four years before we would actually be able to auction it because that's a statutory period. We would place people in, you know, we'd have somebody in that, we'd have a family in that home for three, four, five, six years paying some type of rent.
And in order to do that, we need to be aware of the property.
Exactly.
And the judgment and the situation and the fact that those rooms are empty and.
Right, right. If you have a habitable home, of course, but yeah.
Right, of course.
Time to move on?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Are we, are we going to see somebody introducing legislation then on this?
We'll get some answers to a couple of the question, a couple of questions or at least conduct a little more outreach to some of our, our partner municipalities just to have some follow-up on, on making sure that there really hasn't been any. I, we don't want to just take, you know, ProChamps' word for it, obviously. Um, and, and we have some, you know, knowledge base on that from, from May's involvement with, you know, Riverhead too. But we will speak to Islip and Babylon and make sure that there hasn't been any of the negative fallout. Come back if that's, if the answers are favorable there, I think we'll try and push forward some.
Yeah, okay.
Legislation for you guys to look at.
Thank you.
Service.
Thanks.
All right, so let's, before we do exact, uh, just a couple of updates. We can, we can go around. Uh, Ryan is leaving, so we're not going to get a COVID update. Um, you know, though it's, the numbers continue to, you know, be okay. I think we had two yesterday in Southampton, but the county numbers did go up. I mean, there's definitely something going on.
Yeah, sure.
There was something going on and I won't be surprised to see. You know, because there's diff, two different sites that I look at. So one is sort of a, a day later than the other. So I did notice that the, you know, the county numbers, which hadn't been put onto the tracker map, um, yesterday did jump up. There wasn't quite 2% of those. Normally it's like 1% of the.
Yeah, I was right.
Tested, but yesterday it was like 2%. And it was like, I want to say like 160 cases countywide, which is on the higher end typically.
And the reporting is a little different too, you know, Long Island versus Nassau, Suffolk versus Suffolk, you know.
Yeah, Suffolk, Nassau's a little bit higher than Suffolk in terms of the, the number of people tested positive versus over the people tested.
Census is increasing in hospitals too. And, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I expect we are going to see some increases in the numbers. But on the East End, it's, it's still pretty, pretty good. It still seems like Western Suffolk, it's a little, growing a little faster than us. But that's not always, some days we're growing faster than they are, so, um, all right. Um, I have a note here that I guess it's, this is the eighth anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. So, uh, the 29th of, uh, October, is that correct? And I know you served on that task force, John. It's something you've been, you guys have been studying. I guess it's constantly reminded to us that we're vulnerable.
And we have a big storm in Gulf right now.
Yeah, there's a storm on the Gulf, but they're also expecting, I guess, got a, a message from PSEG too that Hurricane Zeta could impact our area today. That they have deployed extra crews and things like that, so, um, and of course, Halloween comes this Saturday. And just to remind everybody, you know, to be cautious, particularly in light of the pandemic. Take ex, extra precautions, social distancing. And then, um, early voting is going on up in, it ends this Sunday. I guess it's through Sunday though, right? It's, Sunday is still early voting on Sunday. I don't know what the hours are, but.
There's different hours depending on the day and it's online.
Stuff is available online.
I, I just voted yesterday.
I did too.
And it was 20 minutes.
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
It was, it was really well done, very safe. I felt very good about it.
And, well, actually when I arrived, it was a very short line and it quickly built. It was like triple, by the time I entered the building, the line was three times longer than when I had arrived there. There were some issues with parking and I noticed a car got ticketed that was not, that was parked us along the road. Um, you, you, that is not an allowable spot. You can park at the college.
Yeah, it's easy. It's a short walk.
It's a short walk. And there's, and there's parking over, you know, around that gymnasium where the voting is. If you can't find a spot there, don't park along the road. Go, go to the college, uh, parking, the, the designated college parking lots. So, uh, but, but I did also find out that a lot, a lot of people voting were from Southampton. You don't have to vote at, that, you can vote at any of the early voting locations. And apparently the lines were so big up the island that people like from Patchog were driving out to Southampton to vote.
Yeah, I can think of that too.
Because they, uh, they could drive out here, stand on a much shorter line and drive back in less time they would have spent standing outside of the one closer to them, which is interesting. So maybe word is getting out that the lines aren't so bad here, but.
We also have tradesmen out here who, who have timed it right, who live in the West to travel out here to work and then vote and then go back. So that's also part of that process too.
Right, so, but you know, some, sometimes there have been lines there.
There've been, I saw some long ones, one almost down to Montauk the first couple of days of days they started it, but it looks good. This morning I passed it, it opened at eight and...
It was really well-run, though, I have to say. They got us through it pretty quick.
Yeah.
Gave us a little tutorial on, you know, how to properly fill it out. There's questions on the back, too.
Yeah.
Turn it over.
Turn it over.
So, anyway, but if you haven't already voted, please take that opportunity. And then we do have a, a survey, is it kind of up now on the website? The Community Law Enforcement Review Committee has a survey about police perception on the town's website, trying to solicit public information and ways to improve our police department. There's a few questions, I filled it out, only took like a minute to fill out, so that could be helpful to us as we go through. Tommy, John, you're, you're part of this committee, you know, we have a community committee that is looking at our policing policies and procedures and going to make some recommendations to make sure that, you know, we've minimized bias and we're, we're using all the proper technologies and to keep people safe and to make sure that we dole out policing in a, you know, fair, fair way. All right, and I was able to attend a groundbreaking over the weekend with the Bridhampen Childcare Center. They've knocked down the building now, it's gone, they're building a brand-new building, I think it's like 6,000 or 7,000 square foot building. It was really, really nice ceremony. Bridgette spoke, Legislative Fleming and Legislative Thiel and myself, and Mayor Warren said a few words, too. And Dan Retina opened it up and talked a little bit about the history of the site, it was really sort of fascinating, talking about how the original building was built, I think 100 years ago, but it was, it was after a real tragedy where some migrant farm workers, there was a fire and the children died in the fire. And some of the farm families never wanted to see something like that happen, happen again, they wanted to have a place where they could go for safety, and so they created this community building really for the farm families, the migrant, the employees of the farmers. And now 100 years later, they're getting a brand-new building, it's going to be beautiful. So it was really nice. Oh, and Kathy Hochul, Attorney Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant spoke as well, she came to this, there's some state money involved with it. It was nice.
That's a great story, we should probably incorporate it in the Southampton African-American History Museum, I know they're going to be having, having some programming on the Great Migration and the connections between New York and other areas and the migrant workers who would come up here and who have settled here, so we'll be looking into those, they're going to be looking into those, those historical routes.
Hmm.
That should be one. Good story.
And then lastly, just a reminder that this weekend, we set our clocks back.
Yep.
What day is that on?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Saturday night.
Saturday night into Sunday?
Sunday to Sunday.
See, I don't even think about it anymore because the iPhone sort of does it automatically.
Yeah, it's like under your stove and your microwave.
Right, exactly, some of the appliances, but you do feel the difference. So what does that mean, like we'll wake up, it'll be darker or lighter?
No, wake up, it'll be lighter.
It'll be lighter when we wake up? Okay.
It'll be darker.
It'll be darker earlier.
Extra hour of sleep.
All right, so that's, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I do.
Julie?
Sure, I'd just like to read a quick blurb here. Throughout the month of November, the Youth Board will be honoring Southampton residents who volunteered their time, energy, and expertise on behalf of the youth in Southampton. Due to COVID restrictions this year, though, the volunteers will be honored virtually via the town's website and social media. And at work sessions throughout November, I'm going to be recognizing each of the volunteers. All of these individuals have been honored by agencies who are on the front lines of providing positive youth development services within Southampton. The Southampton Youth Board selected November, which is a season of giving thanks, as the right time to recognize these volunteers, and I look forward to sharing the names of those who have been nominated beginning at our next work session. So I'm going to do that throughout our work sessions in November.
That's nice.
Cool.
So we'll hear from everybody who's been nominated.
Okay, good, excellent, anybody else?
A quick shout-out to our constituents, thank you for wearing masks. Really, to a person, people are wearing masks, it works.
John, you have any?
Um, well, yeah, just quickly, I went this weekend to Tupper Boathouse into Conscious Point Marina and looking at, you know, what, what Tupper Boathouse is, where we're at after we've raised it, and then spoke a lot with Mark Matthews and Ann Reisman, I think Julie's well aware of them, they're about to talk about how they're going to be able to run the Tupper Boathouse. There will be a boat woodworking place there, which I think is great, but a large, you know, they're still struggling to see how, what the operating costs and things are like that. But I did find interesting, I found some, some, and Howard Reisman as well, but I did, I did find that we have some, some, they were, the trustees were there, they were, clamp spat out, they were trying to, you know, do, do those things there. It's really a beautiful place, but I found, I found that I have some double-dipping people who are not only going to the oysters at Conscious Point, but they're also doing oysters at the Marine Center in Hampton Bays, at Cornell's site. So it's really nice to see that synergy there going on, they have a hatchery going on, and I know we have coming up some of the CPF funding for the Marine Center, which is, I think, really critical to Hampton Bays and what they're doing there is really, really important as far as education goes and so forth, and I'm trying to, I was trying to balance the two, the two sites, see how they're going, we got some synergy going on between those two sites as well, so just a lot of thanks to Howard Reisman for sending me the invite, it was, it's just, I would really say, you know, if you get a chance to go, just go, particularly when you've got the volunteers down there working, it's a lot of, it's just a lot of fun.
Well, that's it. Rick?
Well, just a quick comment, with the uptick in the COVID cases in Suffolk County, I think they identified three gatherings of 50, 50, and 90 people that had 56 positive cases out of them, reported on News 12. It actually, one event on the North Shore affected seven different school districts from the people who were there. So I'm going to ask everybody with Halloween on Saturday to kind of stay with your family, stay safe, trick-or-treat, there's some great events going on. West Hampton does have their walkabout with some of the businesses, Hampton Bays has a trunk-or-treat at St. Rosalie's, they'll be open handing out candy and, you know, knock on your neighbors' doors, just stay safe.
I think Sack Harbor canceled the parade.
Been several, a lot of cancellations, but there's still a couple of things going on.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Rick. I'm not sure on that, whether the Sack Harbor, if you're interested, find, I guess the village would know that, did you hear about that? That there may not be, they usually do that.
The ragamuffin parade?
Ragamuffin thing.
Has been canceled.
Oh, has been canceled, okay.
Sad, it's adorable.
Yep. Okay.
It'll be back.
So, all right, let's see, so for exec session, acquisitions, confidential legal, I know there's personnel, there's at least one personnel matter, two.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session to discuss those items.
Okay.
Executive by Councilman Boogie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned for all other purposes.